Good Thursday morning, everyone. I now call the October 21st, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. Please remember to silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this work session. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning, Chair Thrower. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form and hand it to the school board secretary. After the Board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the secretary will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and dispel their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. We will now begin the work session with the superintendent's administrative briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. It's always great to see you, and happy Thursday. I only have one briefing item this morning, and that is, I'm sorry to say to start with COVID-19, but I have to. But this is good news to report, that on our weekly call with Department of Health on Monday, we reviewed the current data. As you all may recall, we are expecting to wait until we have two weeks of transmission levels for the cases per 100,000 and the local positivity rate to be at substantial levels or below. And we have been at high level for the cases per 100,000 for three weeks, as of last Friday, and we had been already at one week for the cases per 100,000. So if the data remains as it has been trending in a good direction, I'm not going to say positive direction, but in the right direction, and otherwise saying there's a decrease in the spread, we will hear that data tomorrow. We will receive that from the Department of Health tomorrow. That will mean that we have reached two weeks of high transmission level for the positivity rate. So what that means is we will have completed the two weeks of high transmission level, which is substantial or better, for two weeks. So the impact of that, and the reason I bring that up today, is because, as you are well aware, our resolution on our mask, our face coverings, is rooted in that data. And so that data would be reached. We anticipate through today, and we would have that information tomorrow.
Excellent.
Excellent news.
Yes, fantastic news. So when I'll be very optimistic and say when the both criteria are met for the two weeks tomorrow, then we have some turnaround time, I believe, Attorney Powers, regarding the resolution. It does, it sunsets, but we also have to vote on it. Is that correct?
I believe it was an automatic, it was, the sunset was automatic depending on the numbers.
Right.
So if the numbers fall within line, then that's a seamless transition.
Perfect. So even if we did have to vote on it, I would say, you know, when we meet criteria, then that's that, and then we would formalize it if we needed to at our next meeting, so as not to delay. How does that impact our volunteers?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. That's the other piece I was going to share. So there's two components. First, I wanted to make sure to bring forward the resolution issue. But if you'd like me to go ahead and talk about, we are prepared, the team is prepared to move forward with the volunteers and visitors with our schools. And so as soon as we get that data, we will move forward with that planning. We've already had conversation internally about that, and we will be communicating with our, with our schools and our departments on, on how to transition back to that and what that will look like.
Excellent. Questions, Board?
Sure. So that will be a transition, and it won't be an automatic? I'm just curious, like, if, if we have numbers come out tomorrow, and we, because that's when the numbers will be released, and if that, in fact, says it, can then we start with the welcoming folks onto campuses on Monday, or will it be a transition?
So, great question, Board Member Campbell. It will be automatic. The transition part comes back to those who are re-engaging with our volunteer base, our mentors, and some of our folks that are reading with our students. And so we have to work on plans to make sure we're communicating to the families that this is something that we are re-engaging with. That's part of that transition, but certainly we would be allowed to continue to work through that. Yes. So we look forward to welcoming visitors back and volunteers.
So how are we going to notify the public that we have reached those? Are we going to set an alert or something?
That's why we need to work on the transition back, so we don't want to just say, okay, here we are, we need to talk about and communicate what that looks like, so that again, so part of the concern, the conversation we had with, if there is a parent, for example, that is concerned about that, and their child participating and engaging in a reading opportunity with a visitor, then they would have the opportunity to communicate that with the school. So we have to work on that transition. What does that look like? Communicating, this is our plan, this is our intent, here are ways that you can share with the school any concerns you may have, if you would choose for your child not to participate, but we intend to have visitors back on our campuses and volunteers back. So multiple ways. It will need to be a district message, it will also need to come from schools.
So what, will the, will the, in addition to the visitors, will the, will the parents still have the ability to choose to have a mask worn by their children if they choose to?
I wouldn't say why not, you know?
That was always, I think.
That was always the thing, you know?
Employees will no longer be under a mandate.
Right.
As it rolls off.
But you're still able to choose to do that.
Sure, if they want to.
If they want to, it'd be appropriate attire.
Absolutely, right.
And Board Member, yes, Board Member Browning, it's a great question. Prior to the resolution, it had always been an option, so it was optional. Anyone is, if they, if they so choose to wear one, they're encouraged, and we certainly support that for students and for any adults on our campuses.
So it will basically revert back to being optional?
Yes.
Well, it never, it was always optional, basically.
Yes.
Even through this time, it's been optional. Parents could opt out. It was still been optional.
Right.
It was optional for employees. Now, now it can revert back to employees, so.
Optional for all.
Right. And the key, the key there was the request for the mask, rather than no mask, and then optional to go to the mask. So this will clear it all up.
Yes. And, and to clarify, for the parents and for the students, that would conclude the parent opt-out requirement provision for them to express that. It's just optional. Nothing's.
And that's how it's steady. It's been at 22% for, for weeks, you know?
Right.
So, well, that, that is really, really great news. And just to clarify that, you know, masks are just part of the dress code, you know? They're not going to get in trouble for wearing one, so to speak, and we're just going to go back to the way it was. So that's good.
Great news. It's nice to share some great news. I know everyone is very excited and looking forward to having our volunteers and our visitors back on campuses, and I know you all are supportive of that as well. Thank you.
Just one last detail regarding fall festivals. I've been getting some calls about fall festivals and what that's going to look like. As far as COVID-19 is concerned, if, when we reach the criterion that we had put into place, will that then open up the schools to be able to coordinate and schedule their fall festivals?
Yes, great question, and we've had that conversation as well. Yes, so we have mirrored the outside activities at the elementary levels like we have for athletics at the secondary level, but this would open up the opportunity for the indoor as well, so absolutely indoor and outdoor. So all of that would be now available as an option. We still, I still want to say, though, I think this is important, you know, I can, I can hear Mark Lander talking in my ear almost, a reminder from the Department of Health that as we have done this from the beginning, that we still will utilize as many mitigation strategies as we always have. So I think it's important to mention that. Cleaning, hand washing, distancing where possible, all of those things will still be in place to the extent possible and feasible and appropriate.
Thank you, Superintendent, for clarifying that, because I think people will think that the sunsetting of the resolution means that everything goes, and that is not the case. It does remove the mask, however, we're still supposed to be doing the social distancing and the things that we can do within the classrooms as possible, as much as we can. So I don't want parents to show up at a school, and you've still got the kids facing each other again, and within tight quarters, because that's going to be an issue.
Indeed, Board Member Cummings. And also with the realization that with the conclusion of this, the sunsetting of this resolution, and also returning more people back to campuses, those are both happening simultaneously. So we have to be very careful to do our due diligence and monitor, as we always do, and will continue to, but to take good care.
Any other comments from the Board? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other COVID-19 update?
No, no, and no other briefing items. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. All right, is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to transportation updates with Ms. Rohr. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Thrower. Dr. Gullett, Superintendent, Board Members.
Chair Thrower, I'm sorry. I believe we did skip the resolution discussion we were going to have about COVID-19. Is that correct, or am I mistaken?
No. Yeah, COVID-19 updates with J.C.
COVID-19, that's COVID. Yeah, I was, that was my briefing.
Briefing.
Oh, okay, that's what I was asking, if there was any other COVID.
I'm sorry. I just saw Ms. Oliver back there, and she kind of had this look on her face, like, sorry about that.
My briefing was COVID-19, unfortunately.
All right, Ms. Oliver, come on down.
No worries at all, and I could have waited. I certainly, certainly would have waited. Good morning, good morning, Chair Thrower, Board, Attorney Powers, Ms. Prestapina, and Superintendent Gullett. I am glad to be here today to talk to you about the resolution that is on the table currently and is active. It is Resolution 2109, and it is the resolution that provides leave provisions for our employees for COVID reasons and has since very early on in the pandemic. These provisions have included our 10 days of EPSLA leave, our extra five days of paid leave, and our six weeks of the employee's ability to use their own accrued leave or go uncompensated if needed after they've exhausted all other forms of leave available to them to ensure job protection while they're fighting an illness related to COVID, an extended illness related to COVID. The six weeks is for that long-haul time period. This resolution is active, as I said, but will sunset October 31st of 2021. And we can certainly let that happen. Just with the other, as with the other resolution, this wouldn't need any board action. It is already set to sunset, and that is certainly an option that we have. There is also a second option, of course, and, and lots of things in between, and we're here today to find out what the Board wishes to do moving forward with this resolution. Another option could be to let this, let this resolution sunset October 31st and November 1st, bring a new resolution that would be greatly reduced but would still provide a small leave benefit to our employees who may have exhausted all of their personal leave time. We know our newer employees don't have leave time built up, that kind of thing. The second option is to provide simply a 10-day uncompensated timeframe for COVID leave reasons only, to be used only after employees have exhausted all of their personal accrued sick leave. So greatly reduced, the 10 EPSLA days would be gone, paid at their daily rate, that would be off the table. The five extra days of paid time at their daily rate would also be off the table, so 15 paid days gone. The six extended weeks, if you need it, after you've exhausted everything, FMLA, district medical, would be gone, and that was never paid. They used their own accrued time, or they went uncompensated. That would be off the table. 10 uncompensated days, so no cost to the district, except for a substitute in the room, those types of things, certainly, but to be used only after the employee has exhausted their personal sick leave and would have no other options except for like a full-on district medical leave. So that is what we're broaching to you today, and of course, then you can have conversation about what you would like to see in regard to that, and certainly if you have any questions about that, I can take those.
Thank you. Board?
Yes, Chair Thrower.
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation for us before we start?
Well, after much discussion in our, in our executive cabinet, that was the recommendation, that the full group decided we would let the, we would recommend, if you asked, certainly, and that's what I just broached today, let the resolution sunset October 31st, 2021, bring a brand-new resolution, much reduced, but still providing some compassion in the way of 10 uncompensated days. It isn't paid by the district. We have been very generous. However, it is saving a, a job, two work weeks worth, and, and we already have very generous compensation in the way of leave time. So, so this is, would be an additional 10 days, and that is, that is our recommendation. And certainly, we're here to discuss, and we can tweak and.
So they would have two days unpaid, and they would have to use their own sick time. If they don't have sick time, they're just unpaid.
Correct. If they don't have sick time, but they must, the Department of Health quarantines them, or they are positive, they would go out on this 10-day uncompensated leave. Their job would be protected. The other, you know, things wouldn't come into play, like job abandonment or anything like that. The job would be protected for those two full weeks. They might not need two full weeks. We have reduced timeframes now, as you know, on returning, so there's, there's that good news.
So a person that just started work, that probably would not have accumulated any time or a lot of time, would be off of work for two weeks possibly, or longer, depending on how severe the situation is, without pay. But they, but they still have their job.
That is true. That could happen, and we do know of cases where that has happened. People will still, of course, have their, their regular FMLA, so this isn't, you know, the federal FMLA, the 12 weeks that we're all given each year, that would still be available to all employees, as it's always been. And our district medical leave, so once you've exhausted your 12 weeks of regular, not COVID, the extended COVID FMLA that we're used to, these last year and a half, but the regular FMLA, then our district allows you to take the rest of that fiscal year and then an entire, another fiscal year before you have to come back to work for 12 months and work again without taking leave, if you qualify and are eligible through a medical provider. So that, however, small caveat, our beginning teachers, our beginning employees would not have access to FMLA and by federal guidelines, certainly not ours, for 12 calendar months, and our district medical leave can be accessed after a six-month time period.
Can you also talk about sick bank also? Like, say somebody was very, very ill, and those 10 days, can you talk about that a little bit?
Certainly. We have talked about that quite a bit in the past when this all came out. And if your COVID creates health issues that are long-term, that, let's say, serious respiratory issues, and, and now it's life-altering, and you are declining, and you're at high risk, and, and this is becoming a hospital stay and, and long-term care, if it meets the definition, and there's, there's a whole process for how that works, if it meets the definition for, for that fund, then people would qualify for it, whether it's cancer, or whether it's some other type of disease, or whether it is something that has come from COVID.
And just for reference sake, the sick bank is something that employees can choose to contribute to. They can contribute a day.
Absolutely. Yes, they can. It's, it's, yes, I shouldn't go into the rules of it, because that's not my, under my.
Review.
Yes, and, and I don't want to get anything wrong, but absolutely.
So, Madam Chair, is the, is this resolution that suggested, is that written anywhere? Is it something we can, we can see?
It is not. We have the original resolution that, that certainly is here for you to see. It's on your agenda there. It is posted, but I also have copies of the one on the table. This, of course, would go away, but the.
It's a recommended resolution. Do we have that written?
I do not have that written up, but it is, it could be as simple as that recommendation of 10, you know, employees will receive 10 uncompensated days to be used after all accrued sick leave has been exhausted for COVID reasons only. And we would keep all the language that's in here. I work with Attorney Powers on this to make sure it's all done well before we, we finalize anything like this. We would keep the language, the whereas statements, if they apply, some would, might come out. We would certainly keep some of these indicators in here, speaking about, you know, it would have to be documented reason, that, you know, you must utilize it properly, that this leave can't be utilized improperly, those types of, of things that protect both, there are things in here that protect both the employee and the district. So we would keep all of that language, and it would just be very simplified language, though, for the leave portion.
For the additional, would we ever let somebody go if they were sick for 10 days? You know, I mean, we, we would never let somebody go anyhow.
Yes, we would.
Well, we certainly, we, we, we have our provisions, we have our leave provisions, which are very generous. They are in this county, they really are. And then, at some point, if an employee has exhausted all of the leave provisions available to them, and we have also granted a small portion of compassion through a resolution, or if we let it sunset and there is nothing more, then we would work with that employee to make sure they've utilized all of their leaves available. Like I said, the FMLA is three months, as long as they qualify for it. The district medical is the rest of that fiscal year and another year, and we would make sure they knew all of that. There are also ADA accommodations, Americans with Disabilities Act, of course, where you can have accommodations that could help people continue in their job with health problems. And if all of that doesn't work, then at some point, absolutely, we would have to ask the employee to either resign their position, or we would move forward with a possible.
And that's what we're putting the 10 days on at the end of that?
We can either put the 10 days on at the end of all of those leaves, or only at the end of their own accrued sick leave, to where they don't have to exhaust three months of FMLA and a year and a half of, because I don't know that in two years, we'll be in this situation.
That's really the essence, is, is the, somebody that hasn't accrued.
Correct. Correct. Our newer employees coming in, they get four days of leave in advance. I don't know if that's every employee, but I certainly know it's, it's certain ones of them, it might be all. And, and then they earn a day as the pay periods go on, or half a day. And so if, if your child has, you know, a strep, and you've stayed home, you've gotten COVID, you've been quarantined, it is possible our newer employees don't have accrued leave. This would protect those or any employee who has had illnesses, that they've had to use all of their accrued leave, and they don't have anything left either. So you would be protecting pots of people with the 10 days, but it wouldn't be at the entire cost of a daily rate of pay. It would be at the cost of covering an employee, if we needed to cover the employee, and it wouldn't be to the full extent of the 10 EPSLA days, five paid days, and then the six weeks. So looking at a, a, a smaller offering for our employees to continue that compassion, but certainly open for.
When we do get this written out, will the, well, I think you've answered it, that's, so the 10 days will go on the end of it, when we get it written out. All right, all right. I'd sure like to see something.
Sure, no, I would like to make a recommendation that we move forward with their recommendation, that we do let the current resolution sunset and have a new, based off of the recommendations that they're bringing forth with that 10 days unpaid.
I'm having an issue with it. The reason I'm having an issue with it, because it seems like we're kind of backing up on our employees, and we're still in the midst of this pandemic. And we, they have taken care of us, our employees have taken care of us, and to back up on them right now, why wouldn't we just extend this resolution?
In, in looking at the resolution, and you may or may not have this answer, so please don't allow me to put you on the spot, I am curious on number nine. Number nine of our resolution states specifically that any school board employee that may have been out on this extended leave that we've offered them very generously, that were violating quarantine and isolation orders, or potentially were violating others or not using appropriate measures, that we had the ability to actually take disciplinary action or come back on. And, and I'm, I'm curious to know if we actually were doing that? I mean, if we were monitoring, if we, and, and in my opinion, I believe part of the reason that we're trying to do this is because while few and far between, when you have 7,000 employees, there could be a handful, one, two, 10, no real number hypothetically, that have been using this to an advantage, because we have been very lenient in this. And again, as the resolution states, the federal government stopped paying for this back in December of 2020, and we've extended it now to October 31st, that we as a district have been taking on this extra cost, which is fine, because absolutely it's been taking care of our employees. But I am curious to know if we have been monitoring, tracking, that's very difficult to do, insurance agents do that sort of thing, whenever, you know, insurance attorneys go out and make sure, that, that's not what we're in the business of doing. But because we had that in our resolution, I'm just curious to know if we did act upon that at all.
Well, we certainly require documentation from the medical provider or the Department of Health to verify all of the things that come through. So we are making sure we have the paperwork and can certainly take care of any payroll records, if it's inappropriately has been paid or something like that, and if we would have. has been paid, or something like that. And if we would have come across some things, some type of a fraud, or, you know, unfortunately, those things occur here or there, we would have most definitely addressed it. What we did come across was people truly, truly out on quarantine, or maybe even positive, and, and getting tips that they were maybe at an event, a football game in the evening, because their child was there, and they didn't want to miss it. And we did, as an HR team, deal with that, very compassionately. They were out, and they were supposed to be out. We all understand why these things might happen, but they can't, because we have to protect all employees and all students. And so those things were more counseling conversations. Had they happened again, we would have, you know, possibly moved forward with more things. But I can say that has, we have dealt with those types of things, and we, we do have paperwork that we're following up with to ensure the other doesn't happen.
Has there been a large number of people in those situations?
No, no. Our, our employees have been very excellent about protecting themselves, the children, their peers. I, I think that this has gone so well, I really do. We've, we've offered compassion, they've accepted it, they've been grateful, and I think we have had exceptionally small, serious misuse like that.
My concern with this is that this could really, really adversely affect those of our staff members that are not paid a lot, that are on the lower end of the pay scale, and who need to have something, two weeks, they could, that could, two weeks, a person missing one check, I know folk, if they miss one check, they're homeless. And we could possibly put an employee in that position by not having something to try to help them. We're still in the midst of the pandemic. Numbers are getting better, granted, but we still have to be able to look out for our staff, because they've looked out for us during this time.
And while I appreciate those comments, absolutely 100% agree that there certainly are employees of all industry, of all businesses, that potentially could be one paycheck away from catastrophic financial distress. However, at some point, we just have to start saying, any other business out there is having to deal with this as well. And at what point do you continue to extend? Yes, we are still in the midst of a pandemic. But if the federal government has already eliminated this as an option for employees, it puts it back in our, in our plate, basically, to say. And at some point, I do think, especially with our community spread going down, especially with the numbers that we're seeing right now, and what the other resolution we have that is about to sunset, I, I still would move forward with the recommendation that our staff is bringing forth to us.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell.
I, I agree with Allison. I agree that we should follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Chair King.
I like the idea, but what would the sunset be for this one? We're.
We would need to determine that date, sir, so thank you for bringing that up. And it could, the end of the fiscal year, we would, you know, we would just throw, throw out a date and start talking, and.
We're pretty much winding down. I think we're winding down, unless there's a new variant of some sort. I forbid a new variant, by the way, to manifest itself.
Out there in spot.
So, so y'all can rest assured that one will not pop up. So I, yeah, I like, if you have a sunset, you, you know, the sun does go down. And so I agree with the Board Member Campbell.
Ms. Oliver, and also too, the sun sets, and it also comes back up. And we can always pivot if we need to. And we really need our employees at work. And if an employee can be out for that amount of time and not need to have their position covered, then, you know, we want to make sure that every employee that is, that is with us is, is well taken care of, and that there isn't other people that are having to take on that job in addition to their multitask, other jobs is also something that is in my mind. And I am concerned about the fact that while we're celebrating a reduction in the numbers, we're, it's still categorized as we've gone from substantial to high. So that certainly doesn't mean that we're out of the woods. However, this also may be a bit of a catalyst for people to, as you stated, we're not just game on, we still have to take good care of ourselves, continue our mitigation practices, be, do the social distancing, take good care of yourself, get as healthy as you can, you know, all of those things. So I am willing to go with the superintendent's and the group's recommendation, with the caveat that, again, we can, sunsets happen, but then the sun rises again. And if it needs to, then we certainly will respond. And, and I feel like we have really good credibility with our employees. I can't think of any other business that paid their employees, whether they worked or not, throughout the whole shutdown. And, you know, we were budgeted to pay them, and it was the right thing to do, and I'll always feel good about that. And so that's, that's my position. So it sounds to me like there's agreement, for the most part, to move forward. So since we may not have full consensus, where does that leave us, Attorney Powers? Is this something that's going to have to go on an agenda to vote on, or?
Yes, I believe that would be our, our next.
Okay.
Business.
Okay.
So, so I'm hearing consensus, then, Attorney Powers?
I don't think.
To draw it up.
I don't, I don't think so.
Right. Hearing, go ahead and draw it up, and it will go on a board agenda.
Correct, correct.
For vote.
Correct, to draw it up. And so to, not to start it, because, let me just put this out there. So this current one, sunset's October 31st, and I won't be able to have something drawn up and on a board item and board approved by November 1st, for sure. That, the next board date available would be after that.
Wouldn't have to be exactly on that date. You could do it on, you know, appropriate date after the vote. Right?
Or we would lose provisions.
If you approve retroactively.
Let's hear from our attorney.
There would be a gap if we did it that way. We could include it to include retroactivity. However, if we're making a call or decision on, let's say, November 2nd, as to whether or not this person, you know, applies, and November 2nd is not ready yet, we can only then anticipate what the board's vote may or may not be, you know, a few days down the line. So there would, there would have to be, for lack of a better term, a holding pattern there, within which we didn't take action between November 1st and whenever it was due. So there is going to be a gap that's created if we, if we do it that way.
Would it be possible?
Any issue, so.
Right. Would it be possible to continue as is until it gets on the next agenda for a vote?
We can't extend the resolution.
Because it sunsets.
Right.
Recommendation on the legal side?
Recommendations, if we don't have consensus, that we simply go forward and we retroactively, retroactively apply for anyone who, who makes their application alleging that between November 1st and whenever it might be, November 10th, or whatever it was, was the start date sort of of their need for leave. And then we can retroactively allow them to be part of that class. And that would, you know, then our new resolution start, hopefully that would be a very small number of people, if any. And then, provided that the new resolution meets with the board's approval, and we begin that on November, you know, at some point in the middle of November, then, you know, I think that that would be fine. So the smoothest transition would be simply to have a new resolution, which immediately catches up with the end of the old resolution. If that's not possible, then the retroactivity, I think, would likely cover what we need. Again, provided that the board even chooses to continue the resolution, you know, so.
And consensus, I believe, means that the majority, and I think there were four of us, that were moving forth with this new resolution being drafted for November 1st. So I think that we do have consensus. It's not unanimous. So I think there's a difference in the terminology we're using.
I, I agree with that.
So, that being said, then we apparently do have consensus, and we can move ahead.
Is that what the legal said? Did you say we have consensus? Because I didn't hear him say that.
Consensus, consensus under the terminology actually means that the group as a whole consents to a particular action. The group as a whole is not necessarily a majority function. So four out of five, though it represents in common terms what we would say, is a consensus of the group. If there's an actual objection within that, then it doesn't truly create a group consensus. It, it creates what we would essentially have as a.
Majority.
As a majority vote, which is not quite the same as consensus.
Correct.
Well, then we're not voting today. This is a work session.
Which is, in, in times past, and yes, fully agree with your legal definition, in, in times past, the way we've moved forward with something like this, is that it does move forward to the agenda where we're going to be voting on it as a board, and then we pull it, have additional discussion, and we vote at that time where we show what our position is.
Right. Well, and that's why I asked about getting it on an agenda. So are we back to where we started, or?
No, I think this is important, because that magic C, which I've just learned about, that magic C really puts things into an anonymous container, you know, to be voted on without individual identification. So I, I, I adore the idea of being able to keep something off the, the bulk, the bulk identification, if you will. I like consensus being real consensus in your, in terms of your definition.
And I don't believe that anything that we would do would, would prevent us from having staff move forward to draft proposals.
Exactly.
However, then it, it, it doesn't necessarily go under a consent item, a consent agenda item. It would need to be something that is, that is a discussion item and a voted item. And that also then means that we don't have the benefit of having a, you know, a, a window in which it's sort of presumed to be approved. Whereas if we had a consensus, a true consensus, then between November 1st and that future date, there would be a presumption that it was approved.
Mm-hmm. And that would then be a lot more appropriate to put on a consent agenda, because all five of us consented.
Right.
This is a different story. So I feel like what I'm hearing is that it will go on to the agenda, the most expedient board agenda. It will be on as a discussion item, and we will vote on it then. So to move it forward with your draft, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I just want to totally clarify before I, I walk away. We've, we're going to draw the document up, using the 10 uncompensated days to be utilized after all of the employees' personal sick leave has been exhausted. And the sunset date will be.
I would say the end of the fiscal year would be my recommendation.
Up to 90 days.
90 days? Okay.
That's January.
So, well.
So we'll just have to find.
February, yeah, whatever that date will be from the board meeting, three months from the board meeting.
Ms. Oliver, repeat that one more time.
So it is to offer, to allow the October 31st resolution to sunset, come back with a brand-new resolution to go, to be drafted, and go on the next board item under discussion for 10 uncompensated days for COVID reasons only, after the employee's accrued sick leave has been exhausted.
After their sick leave has been exhausted.
That's what I believe, and that's why I'm clarifying all the pieces.
Mm-hmm.
And if a person is a new employee, they may or may not have any sick leave, correct?
Now, there is board policy, and we haven't spoken about this in a while, because since the very first resolution was made, there is board policy that allows an employee to take 10 uncompensated days before, as long as they're communicating with us and haven't, like, abandoned the position, just not shown up, not called in, that's something different.
Right.
It's three days, and that's standard across the state. But the, the board does allow 10 uncompensated days in board policy. I do, I don't even know if that's in here anymore, but that's definitely part of our policy. So that is there. And, and so this is, this is under the resolution for COVID reasons. So an employee could have even used that possibly before, you know, for being ill. And then this is job protection for COVID reasons on top of that. So there's even those provisions that are there if an employee has need for something other than COVID.
So are you saying that an employee, even if they have sick time, can choose uncompensated?
No.
Or do they have to take their sick time paid first?
Correct. All sick leave must be used first. Sick leave is used in conjunction with FMLA, and everything has to be exhausted prior to ever going into an uncompensated state.
Okay.
Are y'all understanding what my sticking point is with this one? Because I don't think you are. My, my sticking point is that I'm concerned about a new employee that doesn't have any time, not having something to protect their job. That's, that's where, that's my sticking point.
But this will. It gives them 10 days to protect their job, for sure. And, and, again, we've been incredibly generous. Yes, we are in a pandemic, but every other industry is having to deal with this right now, too. And to even offer 10 days of uncompensated, and making sure that it's going to hold a job, I mean, yes, people are trying to find jobs out there like crazy, or people are trying to find employees right now like crazy. But I think this is a generous offer for us to continue with even the 10 days uncompensated.
What is, you said that there is a policy that gives them what?
10 uncompensated days.
So every employee has that start, starting.
And it's not related, of course, to COVID.
So this would be an additional, if this was a, if something was separate, you have mono, and then now you have COVID. You actually could have 20 days of uncompensated to hold your job.
Oh, wait, I don't, I, I didn't pick that up. Wow.
Well, I mean, that's.
I'm so, maybe I, I.
I can go, listen.
That's a current, that's a current policy.
That's policy.
I can go with that, but I need to see that in the resolution.
Yeah.
I can go with it, but I need to see, I'm, I'm more about protecting our staff with this. And if there's something that says that they do have some leave there somewhere, because I'm thinking that, I'm new, I'm talking about our new, we have people that just started work, that are starting work daily, that may walk in the door and get COVID.
But anyone that walks in right now could get any illness at any time, and they don't have certain privileges, I'm going to use the word privileges there, the day they start employment, unfortunately or fortunately. How, and that is across the board, any industry, any, any job.
Vice Chair King?
Yeah. No, I was going to say, I agree, because actually, when I was a new employee, I had probably the four days, I can't remember. And then I had young children, and they were sick, and I had to stay home. So at some point, it was uncompensated. So this isn't new, it's nothing. And I personally have even experienced that, so it's just.
I just wanted to make sure they had some protection.
They do.
So if you're telling me that they have, that there is 10 that's already there.
In your own board policy, it's been there for.
And we're going to give them another 10.
Because of COVID, because of the pandemic.
Yes.
I can go with that.
Okay. All right. Great. Well, this has been really good and important conversation.
All y'all had to do is just talk. All you gotta do is just talk it out.
Got to talk it through.
I weren't talking, and I wasn't hearing it. So I wasn't going with it, so.
So that's consensus.
Now you have consensus.
Now you have consensus.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yes.
But thank you for giving me the opportunity to go opine on what consensus means.
Well, it's important, because it drives our next steps. And we really want to be clear about that. You know, typically, we, we sit here like, what just happened? And we talk everything through, and eventually, we get to true consensus. It's very rare that, that we don't. So that's why we're having to have these conversations, and they're important. Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
And Dr. Gollum.
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, just for, as a point of clarification, I'm looking at the calendar. We talked about the November school board meeting, and we have November 9th, and we do not have the second board meeting, because that was canceled.
Right, because.
So I just want to bring forward that. This resolution would have to be completed and uploaded to our system a week from Tuesday. So if that is not possible, then we're looking at December. I just need to share that as I'm looking at the calendar.
So there still will be a gap?
It's going to be more significant gap. I just want to bring that forward.
You put a placeholder there, and then before the November 9th, we could.
With permission of the chair, yeah, that's always, and, and each of the board members being informed.
Yes, it, it, time is of the essence, and if you guys can make. Yes, it, time is of the essence and if you guys can make it happen, then I'm completely comfortable putting a placeholder there so that we can get this done. I'd also be willing to ask the board to come in at a separate quick meeting to do it if it comes to that. You know, but we need to get this done. So you have.
Placeholder is what I hear?
Yes.
We have approval to be a placeholder for the November 9th meeting.
Or you just don't want to call a special meeting and get it resolved and be through with it?
Nicole.
There is Nicole.
We actually have all the way up until November 2nd because we don't publish until November 2nd.
Correct, which is a week from Tuesday. Correct, which is a week from Tuesday. Yeah, that's what I was referring to, was the 2nd.
So from the 31st to, and we're talking about November 9th?
Right. We, we post on, on November 2nd, which is a week from Tuesday. And so that's why I said we just have that amount of time until the 2nd to get this resolution done.
The resolution's done.
How long does it take to do the resolution?
That's.
It, yeah, it should be relatively rapid because it's going to be the same, it's going to be very similar to.
It will be very simple.
You have seven working days is what you have essentially.
Yeah, much more simple than in the past. So I think it will be fine.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, in order to make this as clear as possible and so that there isn't a gap, shall we consider coming in just for a, it wouldn't be an emergency meeting, it would be a special meeting and that needs to be noticed three days?
72 hours, right? Yes.
Yeah. So we could do that too and just get it off the book and have a very quick meeting.
Be through with it. And that way you won't have a gap at all. It will sunset and the other one will go into effect.
That's, I'm sorry. Thank you. Madam Chair, it's up to, I don't know, I'm looking at Ms. Oliver and Attorney Powers to see if that could be completed. I just want to bring that forward in full transparency to make sure that the resolution could be concluded and written in that time period.
Maybe on November 1st itself?
And it may be. I just don't want there to be any surprises later.
Still mean though that we would need to have it advertised and have the, have the document posted.
72 hours in advance.
So.
What date is it? Like three days? I don't even know what date this is. I'm so sorry.
We're talking November 2nd and today is the 21st. So that would give us, yes, we need through the 20th. It would give us basically a week to get it done.
You have a week. Is that possible?
It's doable.
I, I think so.
And it sunsets at 31st. So maybe we could just have a very quick meeting on Monday, November 1st. Boom.
For it to be in effect, November 1st.
How about the idea that you had of, of the retro consideration? If in fact we even have it, you would know by a certain date whether you even had anything that, that applied.
We would. The retroactivity would be, in my opinion, a less viable solution because we would have, if we did have a few people to whom that applied during that period, we're essentially having to wait and just take no action and wait for then retroactivity to kick in a few days later. It's, it's not really ideal.
It's not as clean. It's not as clean and it would be very simple. In fact, we could have, as long as we have a quorum here, if a couple of us can't make it to the physical boardroom, could certainly phone in, right?
As long as we have a physical quorum here.
Yeah. So there would need to be three of us here. I'm going to go for the November 1st.
And the date of your.
November 1st.
And what time? Because that, November 1st, I have lots of things scheduled that day, but I could, depending on the time, I could.
How about first thing in the morning is?
8:00 AM would be terrific.
8:00 AM?
No.
No.
Well, as long as the majority of us, at least three of us are here at 8:00 AM.
I hear three.
And you can call in at 8:00 AM.
Yeah. If, if Board Member Campbell, Vice Chair King and myself as Chair are here physically, then the other two can call in if that meets their needs. I say 8 o'clock. Let's get it done. I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to move it up, let's just do it. You ready?
Ready.
Okay. It will be at 8 o'clock on Monday, November 1st. Hopefully it'll be the shortest meeting in history.
And I would love to be part of that.
Thanks again. Okay. All right.
And Madam Chair, that did conclude our COVID-19 portion of the agenda.
I'm used to you introducing the person and it's all kind of together.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I was like, okay, we said this was going to be a relatively short meeting today, so I was moving right along. All right. Now we can get to transportation updates with Ms. Rora.
Public comment.
Yep. Any public comment?
There's Mr. Robert Schmidt.
Madam Chair, board members, appreciate it. My name is Robert Schmidt, SCHMIDT, 11488 Southwest 82nd Court Road. And in the spirit of keeping with the intent of this meeting, I was informed this morning that I need, my comments need to be relevant to what's on the agenda for today, okay? Was not aware of that. So I'll make a quick adjustment and in the spirit of trying to keep to that, okay, I will take and try and thread my comments into a COVID-19 discussion, okay? Recently, we've seen board members that have become involved, I mean, school boards engaged by the public, by voters, by the citizens, by the parents, okay? And they have been vilified, okay? And there was a, there was a letter that was read at the last board meeting that I didn't really, I couldn't really capture what was read there. So I did my own digging on it, okay? And I saw it was a resolution from the Florida School Board Association in response to the National School Board Association. I believe that's what, I believe that's what was presented here, okay? And I would say that probably a lot of what you're seeing in these, in these meetings is a result of COVID fatigue, okay? So I applaud the school board. I applaud you for doing what you did. I went to this website to see if I could pull forward what was read at that particular meeting, okay? And I didn't find it on the website, okay? So as it was presented in, at the school board meeting, as a matter of public record, I would hope that that would get presented and posted someplace for the public because it's significant, okay?
It will be part of the minutes of the meeting when those are posted.
Okay. And they weren't posted yesterday, I don't think?
No, it took some time.
Okay. All right. Maybe there's a lag time to that. I just need, okay, got it, got it, got it. Anyhow. In the spirit of COVID, okay, I applaud the board for moving forward, trying to get us out of this pandemic that we're in, okay? To sit there and get back to normal and to get back our, our school kids into a sense of what is normal, okay? So I applaud your efforts on doing that. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Um, you're asking about that letter. I'm, I'm trying to see, I'm almost positive that letter is on the FSBA website. That's what I was trying to pull up real fast.
Well, I do, I actually do have both letters from the NSBA and the FSBA, okay? And I suspect probably nobody needs that here.
No.
No.
So anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, we, we do say at every meeting that it needs to be related to a topic, but sometimes, as I shared with Mr. Schmidt, a citizen will come up and speak to the topic, but then shift and pivot into something that's not on the topic. So we do need to be mindful of that moving forward.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I, I love the idea of, and it sort of sets a little bit of a precedent of Board Member Cummings being able to answer and have some dialogue because I think it's appropriate often. It, you know, it just solves the problem right then, right there. And we might want to consider that at some point because like using today as an example, I love that kind of dialogue from a public relations point of view with the general public.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, and if he does need copies of them, we can get him a copy of them, but he said he has copies. So we do have copies in our office of both letters from the Florida School Board Association and that resolution that I did read at the last board.
And occasionally it may be appropriate, especially in a more informal setting like this, to clear up any confusion right there at the, at the microphone. But typically, public comment is for comment only, not discussion, and we're pretty much going to be sticking to that. And I think that it's also respectful to our citizens to be able to use their time to say whatever they have to say. And if there is something that our superintendent can help with through district staff, we've also done that multiple times, have had the citizen connect with someone right here, right now, you know, out the door to address their concern further. So it's not something that the board is going to sit here and problem solve during public comment time. But I do understand the spirit of what you're saying and, and transparency is, is always what we want. And we also want quick follow-up and good problem solving. So thank you. Always good to see you.
Just the idea of, of your capabilities to have the chair sometimes can answer a question. Bingo. Case closed. And it's, it just, it just adds to the communications.
Yes, sir. And sometimes that's definitely appropriate. I agree. All right. Any more public comment? Seeing none. All right, Ms. Rora.
Ms. Rora, with your permission, if I could, if I could just frame the discussion.
Absolutely. I saw her name on the agenda, so.
Most of the heavy lifting here, but I would like to suspend a few minutes to frame the discussion for our viewers at home and for the board. We currently have 242 buses that run a variety of routes. And of those 242 routes, there are 24 current vacancies. Now, when you add to that a daily absentee rate approximately, and of course, this varies on a day-to-day basis, but somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 drivers that are out on a daily basis, it adds a, a burden on our staff to cover those open routes. Now, our bus drivers, to their credit, they step up, they always do. They, they will drive and they will take their time to drive those open routes. The issue then becomes, of course, that by doing that, there are the inevitable delays. And so we, we know that these delays are frustrating to our students. We, we know the delays are frustrating to our, our parents. We know the delays are frustrating to our schools as well. And I certainly would like the board to know that these delays are unacceptable and they're frustrating to our transportation department included. So what, what you're going to hear shortly is our, is a layered approach of how we are trying to problem solve and minimize the, the delays that our schools and our students are experiencing. And so, yes, you're going to hear from Ms. Rora and you'll hear from other presenters as well on how we're trying to address the bus driver shortage. That is the crux of our problem. So what are we doing to head on address those issues? And then you'll hear how we're trying to retain and support our drivers because not only do we have to bring new drivers, new talent in, we have to retain the drivers that we currently have. You'll hear how we're trying to address our, our staff morale as well. That's very important that we're able to keep our drivers and that the morale of our department stays high. We know that this is a, a district issue and district issues require district solutions. So you'll also hear from two of our very best principals, Ms. Heather Lepira at Saddlewood Elementary, and then you'll hear from Mrs. Melissa Forsyth at Liberty Middle School and the things that they're doing as examples of what our principals are doing to support our, our bus drivers in transportation as well. So we're about to get into all that, but first I would like to pause and I would like to give a public thanks to Mr. Travis Thorpe. And Mr. Thorpe is the owner of Pasta Fair in Bellevue. And I would like the community and our board to know that Mr. Thorpe is a very, very generous man and he has gone out of his way, he has gone above and beyond to support our transportation department. He is purchasing lunch for all of our drivers and all of our bus aides. We have been doing that for the past few weeks and I believe we, we conclude on November 10th. But Mr. Thorpe, if you're watching or if you hear this message, on behalf of many, we thank you for your generosity and support of our school system and our transportation department. Before I bring you up, Ms. Rora, one, the, the first presenter, our first guest is, is a gentleman that I've gotten to know over the, the past few weeks. His name is Ivory Lucky. He is from School District Services and the board will recall a, a few meetings ago, we did approve the, the contract with School District Services. And we think this is going to be a, a out-of-the-box and innovative way to provide support for our open routes only. And so we asked Mr. Ivory to, to attend this works session and he graciously came up from Orlando this morning. And he'll spend just a, a few minutes providing an update of where his company is and just a brief overview of what they do and what they don't do. So with that said, Mr. Ivory, welcome to the podium.
Madam Chair, may I be excused for just one minute?
Yes, sir. You can go ahead. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Thorpe, the board members and superintendent. Again, my name is Ivory Lucky. I'm the CEO of School District Services and what we do is we provide school bus transportation. Formerly, primarily it was to charter schools and also supplementing school districts with extracurricular activity, transportation, field trips, football games and things like that. School bus transportation is a highly regulated and extremely complex undertaking that we endeavor every day in transporting the hundreds and thousands of students that we do across the state of Florida in addition to the partnerships that we have with our other clients. And so I want to commend you guys for taking the time and having the courage to take an outside-of-the-box approach, a very innovative approach to being able to provide an impeccable service level to your students and to your parents by agreeing to supplement your current school transportation operation with a vendor such as ourselves. And so, again, I commend you guys for that. And I just want to tell you a little bit about where things are since you guys voted to move into contract with us. We initially, in anticipation of this opportunity, started our recruiting efforts. And it's a regional recruiting effort. It's not just limited to citizens of Marion County, but outlying counties also. We have had a tremendous amount of initial success in being able to recruit school bus drivers, current school bus drivers, former school bus drivers, and also those individuals looking to re-enter the job market with doing something that is a little different than what they have done before. As you know, Florida is a growing state and so we also have been able to recruit individuals that are moving into Florida from other areas where school bus, school bus, I'm sorry, school bus contracting is a more common situation than it is here in the state of Florida. So currently, we have roughly five school bus drivers that are ready to start immediately. They have gone through the, all of the compliance requirements that we have. Ms. Rora will be submitted or provided with a very detailed compliance checklist and compliance documentation to show that the, the bus drivers are meeting the same requirements that the Department of Education requires for every school bus driver in the state of Florida to have. We have the school bus drivers in our candidate pool have completed their criminal background checks within your security and fingerprinting HR department. And so they are standing by for the final details of what their routes would be and other administrative activities for an immediate start. We have drivers that are prepared to start as soon as tomorrow. But again, there is a process it has to take to make sure that all of our requirements have been covered off on, okay? And so just to tell a little bit about our approach to this. So again, this is a supplemental school bus transportation operation. So in no way do we intend to do what I call as body snatch. We, it is, we are professional. So we don't intend to recruit or solicit any of our current employees because our program is just not designed to be a very long-term approach. It is definitely designed to be supplemental. The school bus drivers who are coming with this approach are excited about the fact that it is something that is supplemental because not only would they be able to provide school bus transportation or their driving skills to the Marion County School District, but also surrounding districts as well. And so that is how we retain our drivers, is specific to the type of programs that we offer within our company, okay? So that, that's really kind of high level of where things are in our approach to supporting your district with the bus driver shortages that we're currently faced with.
Thank you, sir. Board, do you have any questions?
Mr. Lucky, do you anticipate having any more drivers, any more people to send our way to Marion County? I know you're trying, probably doing it for other counties, but.
Well, two things. First, we have two types of candidate pools. We look for drivers who already have the license to drive a school bus. And then our second candidate pool are those that do not have the license and they have to be trained. Their onboarding process is, is more of a four to six-week process instead of immediate start. And so we do have those candidates in the pipeline. The numbers are averaging around 10 to 15 that we started interviewing. Again, while that is the majority, we still like to start with those who are already ready to hit the ground running, okay? ready to hit the ground running. Okay? And, you know, this is, again, this is innovative. So, we only provide this service at this level in one other school district. I think Osceola County, their board voted to move forward with our supplemental services just last Tuesday. So, again, this is a very groundbreaking, innovative approach to the transportation issues that all districts are faced with.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes, I'm thrilled to see this. The problem we're facing of getting to school late and then perhaps having to leave early, it's just a problem we can't tolerate. And you all stepping in, and I think there's also an additional component that you're actually, this outside of our employee base is actually a help to the overall, our overall group of employees, our drivers. Because it's my understanding, now you all can correct me on this if it isn't accurate, but I believe we were at a better situation for our drivers several years ago. And then, it went downhill so that we didn't get into this type of a situation. So, it was actually hard on our people. So, I think this will work as an advantage to our people, our employees. In addition, it'll get the students to school on time. I mean, I'm elated with what I see. Help me if I'm missing anything in that, but that's our goal, is to put a student in the classroom and to bring them out and get them home in an appropriate amount of time.
Get it on time.
Gets it done, and it helps our employees as well.
Exactly to your point. Our supplemental services are designed to provide that benefit. Not only do we get the kids to school on time, it alleviates the strain that's put on the other employees, having to do double and triple runs and things like that. So, it is a twofold level of satisfaction that you get from having the supplement.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or input?
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Very happy to have you on board. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. Good morning, once again. So, that was very good. Thank you so much, Mr. Lucky. We will speak shortly. And in lieu of what we have in dealing with our driver shortage, outside of the contract services that we're receiving from School District Services, I'd like to talk about what we're doing here in Marion County, in my department. So, currently, we have hired, just looking at September through October, we bought on, we bought on 10 drivers and seven aides currently in process. And when I say in process, that means all have been interviewed, and they are either doing fingerprint, background, and we had three to show up today that are in class. We have 11 bus drivers, and we have seven bus aides that are in process. So, our efforts continue. We continue to recruit. Getting the applicants to come in has not been a problem. Retaining them, we've had many to leave. So, when we look at the same dates, September and October, of people that have left us, we've had 14 drivers. So, as you can see, as we bring them in, we're losing them now. And it's not always a sad moment for losing them because many of them I've lost to the schools. So, they've gone into the classroom, paraprofessionals and some teachers. So, we're still keeping them as our own, so that's not a bad thing. It's just, I wish I could slow it down a little bit so I could catch up. And then, looking again at that same data since the beginning of the year is what I tried to stick with, we have 16 bus drivers and 16 bus aides that we had already initiated. They applied, we interviewed, and we lost them along the way for several reasons. And those numbers are significant to see that shift up and down, to see why we are where we are. But, we will continue to work forward with that. So, moving on to some of the things that have assisted us to onboard faster is the fast-track of human resources. What we did a little changing, working with HR to try to fast-track, getting them behind that wheel training if they needed it, getting them through that new hire session is a help because you lose people if they're waiting. They've put their feelers out in many areas, so if we're too slow in getting them onboard, we may lose them. So, we fast-tracked that and worked with them. That has been of help, and we see them coming into the class more quickly. Other things that we've done and we continue to do is rearranging those routes, looking at routes as they change, as ridership change, combining, condensing, and trying to shorten those ride times and such. Also, we have non-instructional management covering routes. Thank you, Board, for approving that. We currently have two teachers, one from Liberty and one from Lake Weir. Liberty is already up and running, and I think their second weekend to that. Lake Weir starts tomorrow, and so, they're driving a route. And then, we have a bus aide from Liberty that's assisting on that same route. So, that's tremendous. We're hoping to get others to look into that. I have received some emails that I'm vetting. Some have their license, some do not, and when they look at the prerequisites to get that license, they're like, whoa, they didn't realize that it's so in-depth. But, it's in-depth because it's important to make sure that you meet the criteria to transport students so that they're safely transported. And other things that we're working on, administrators throughout the district are riding the buses, are getting on to, so they can monitor the student behaviors so that they can assist that driver and give them tips on student management, showing support. So, we've had, not only my staff, Safe School is scheduling to ride next week, and Dennis has ridden previously, but his staff are going to take on three days each. So, that's significant, so the drivers can see they're not alone in this fight. And so, we have also looked at various schools to see where we have open routes, what routes we can bring in maybe 15, 20 minutes earlier so that we can then go back out for a second route, and now you have two busloads on your campus prior to the bell. That takes a lot of work, and it takes buy-in from the principals, from the administrative staff on that campus, because we can't just bring children there and they're not supervised. So, far, we have Liberty, Horizon, and Westport that have assisted us with that. And so, we're grateful. Thank you, Liberty, Horizon, and Westport. And as we continue, we'll look at other schools to see where that is possible. But, that's just another means of thinking outside of the box of how we can get the students on campus on time. As we continue to retain support and build morale, we are implementing the program of lead drivers. We'll have our initial meeting next week so that they can fully understand what the expectations are so that we can go into this and be successful. The Skylark that went out to parents has helped. Thank you, Kevin. It was well addressed and well-received. I got a lot of comments from parents and from school staff about it. So, it takes a village. We are a community. We have to collaborate and talk and work together in solving Marion County problems, what's best for our children. So, I appreciate the community for helping us with that task. We have professional development that we're continuing. This is the first time since I've been here that we've utilized a teacher's workday for our non-instructional staff to come in and do PD. So, I was very excited. Thank you to the behavior specialist team, RJ, and my team member Julie Moore for gear head in that in such a short period of time, and it was very successful. And we didn't just do this one-day, three-hour training and then we're done. It's a follow-up. They had takeaways that we would be following up and measuring to see what's successful, what's not successful, so we can build on it when we do the next round of training. So, I'm excited about that. And another way to give support is we're going to an attendance monthly, what do we call that? Attendance Matters. So, the drivers and the aides already have in their contract and board policy where they get a supplement of a bonus for perfect attendance. But, it's broken into two semesters, first semester and second semester. So, if you're a week or two into that first semester and you miss a half the day, you've lost it, even though we're just starting. So, it's a big gap, and sometime they lose what they enthuse about once they've missed a day or two. So, we're trying other means of building up that morale and supporting them. So, Attendance Matter is going to be where we look at by zones and measure the absenteeism, and then the zone with the strongest attendance rate, we, the managers, will provide breakfast. So, we'll be providing breakfast to those zones who have the greater attendance, and it won't be one time. We'll make sure we do it enough so everybody has an opportunity to protect our good cooking. So, then, also, they're looking forward, and thank you, Board, once again, for the Disaster Relief Fund. They are excited about that, and we talked about that. So, the recognition, looking a lot, when you're out there working, yes, we come to work. We chose this career because we thought we could be successful, do a good job, but also reap the benefits of receiving a paycheck. But, sometimes, we like to hear "job well done." Oftentimes, we don't say it enough. So, we've made a conscious effort to make sure that we're recognizing the good things that our drivers do. And that good thing could be just coming to work today, because we don't know what could have been going on, that they could have stayed home. So, we are making a conscious effort, and I say "we," the management staff and others, to make sure that we take the time out to say thank you and be sincere about it. Just that little kudos goes a long ways, just to make them know that they're not in this fight alone. And I'd just like to thank you, Board, Dr. Gullett, for believing in us, for trusting me with this team, and for supporting us in all we do. We didn't get here yesterday, and we won't be fixed by tomorrow, but we will be fixed.
Thank you, Ms. Rora. And speaking of solutions outside the box, would you just give a quick mention about the Bus Buddies Program that unfortunately wasn't able to start at the beginning of the year the way we were hoping that it would?
So, the Bus Buddy Program, hopefully, hearing the good news from the superintendent this morning, we will be able to have that conversation so that we can get that up and running. I'm still excited about having the Bus Buddies to come and ride so we can set up, reach out to the schools that we had initially looked at to make sure they're onboard, and we'll start with those and run it for a week and go from there.
Absolutely. And that's going to be a volunteer program that we hope to grow, and it was born out of the realization that kids are on the bus for a long period of time because we're a big county, even if we had plenty of drivers. And to have that opportunity to become a mentor for kids and just spend time with them and be able to hopefully help keep things calm on the bus and help students understand that, you know, the bus is an extension of school, and there's good, kind people that are ready to support them in those areas, and by extension, the bus driver, which is, no one should feel alone in an effort like this.
Absolutely. And that Bus Buddy Program will really help us. We're starting at the elementary level because that's where it's most needed. Remember, those children are coming in and have never been on a bus. Many have never been in anything except for their passenger cars. So, they have to be taught how to sit, you know, how to buckle, how to remain wise. It's important not to walk up and down the aisle. So, those Bus Buddies can hopefully help with some of those behaviors that we're seeing that are safety issues.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Kudos to you for making this happen. I know it's a very difficult area. I've got two items. One, I think something that will help you is as we get this solved, especially with Mr. Lucky, I think as we get this solved, the idea of buses rushing to get back. I get calls on, whoa, in a neighborhood, and I know you do too. And the overall idea that, wow, we've got to get this moving, got to get this moving, got to get this moving, like that. I think we're going to be able to calm down. It'll be safer for the bus riders. It'll be safer for the drivers. It'll be safer for the neighborhoods, because there's always little toddlers around. And my second item is what else can we do ongoing? I'd like, I'd just like to extend appreciation for what you've done, and then, what else? What is, you know, what's in, what else would you dial up if you could that we can do from a policy point of view? I know you're handling the operational point of view, but on our side, what else is in your mind's eye, or come back and let us know?
So, yes, so, we're looking to refresh our recruitment, in the area of recruitment. So, we're looking for ideas there. Some of the things that we've done, we've parked buses in various places and put the large banner on them. We put banners on fencing of our schools and our school board properties. We've used the yard signs to advertise for school buses. They get mowed down a lot. And we use the marquee at the schools to scroll through and advertise. So, just to refresh that, because it gets redundant after a while. We did do new flyers that we, they are like a half-paper size, and we're going to cardboard-type. I think we have one out front, so we're going to distribute it, some of those, so they can advertise for us. But, refreshed ideas for recruitment.
Is compensation going to fit in there somewhere?
Compensation.
Compensation for the drivers, like, you know, that's always, you know, when you're looking for a job, when you're recruiting, when you're hiring, compensation is always a biggie.
Incentives. We do have those, and let me, with our, bringing on new drivers, oftentimes, some of the counties require them to come in with their CDL. Or, if they come and get trained by that county, they're trained sometimes at minimum wages. What we do here in Marion County, we recruit, we bring you in, we do all of your training, and when you are successfully in that and become an employee, you're paid for all the training that you've done at your entry rate of pay. And so, they're compensated for all of that, and that is a big-ticket item that I really see as an incentive. So, we do push that.
Thank you.
Chair, can I speak to?
Yes, Ms. Chair King.
Thank you, Ms. Rora. That was very good, and I appreciate your hard work, because I knew it's definitely in challenging times. What is happening, though, is we do have students that are standing on the roadside for a long time, maybe even up to an hour, and that's dangerous. And then, we have students that are missing time out of the classroom, and we know that the teacher is key. And when they miss, you know, complete subjects and have to make up, you know, consistently, that is bad educationally. And Ms. Rora, I'm not speaking to you about that because that's out of your control. I do maybe have one idea. I don't know if the board or you guys would maybe be interested in it. I know during the summer, I was paying attention to the news, and I know other districts talked about moving school times. I understand it's unpopular, but I was thinking maybe if we could do a study on schools and school times, and we could have less school bus drivers and pay them more, if that makes sense. So, they would be working longer, but we could really maybe give them a great, a better salary, you know? And then, I don't know if that's something we could maybe study, because I'm hearing a lot of short-term things, like the supplements and stuff like that, which is great, and I'm grateful for it. But, I'm also seeing, thinking, okay, we need to look long-term. And I've just heard that somewhere. I wonder if we could study it and just see what it could look like. I know it could be difficult, you know, and it would take some planning, but, you know, our students need to be in our schools, and they need to be safe. And like you said, Mr. Browning, you know, when there's a rush and these buses are traveling and they're in a rush, then that's dangerous too. And so, I just wonder if you guys are interested in something like that or no, just to look at it.
Expand on the concept. So, if you would move at the beginning, would you move the top end then, so the amount of time in the school would be the same?
Well, it would just depend. We could do studies, or just like, say, all elementary schools, I don't know, just say they all stay at eight o'clock. Maybe they could be staggered throughout, you know, just stagger them out an hour, or the high schools. Just, you know, I'm sure there's got to be something that we could look at it and see if that could help, you know, benefit. look at it and see if that could help, you know, benefit our students.
Some type of creative school start times and stop times that would, may help the incredible rush and push that you guys are under.
Yes, yes.
And yes, I do have data because we've done a recent study and looking at something in the near future, but I've had a few principals to reach out and we have actually started some early conversation about looking at shifting time, what it would look like, who needs to shift. And it is a puzzle that is very tedious, but we will, yes ma'am, so we will be looking into that, yes. And we can do a study and.
Yeah, and maybe we could figure out what district. I know it's here in Florida and I wish I could recall, but it would maybe even, you know, be beneficial if we could figure out what district that was and, you know, learn from them too, what worked, what didn't and, you know.
Yes, so I'll be bringing that back to you at a later date.
Thank you.
And Ms. King, to your statement, I just had that same conversation with Mr. Vianello last Friday about us doing, possibly looking at earlier start times because that could be the long-term solution versus, we have a lot of suggestions about short-term, but we have a lot of, we have a lot of kids down the side of roads, parents are dropping their kids off at the bus stop and then going to work and having to come back or the kids are out there. So, I'm looking, I'm looking forward to some long-term solutions versus all the short-term. Short-term helps, but we gotta, we gotta fix it. We can't just bandage it anymore.
Short, medium and long-term solutions, absolutely. I feel like is what you're hearing and what you're doing. You're already having some conversations about creative start and stop times and so on. And while we're being creative, MTI, at least at one point, and maybe it still is, is on a four-day school week. Is that correct? Not anymore? Okay. At one point, they were though, am I right? Okay, they were. And the reason why I bring that up is because we have so many different types of families, so many different types of work schedules, things like that. Please let me say right out of the box, I'm not proposing that the whole district go to a four-day school week, so let's stop the rumors right now. But what I am saying, that it might be worth talking to our schools and talking to some teachers and administrators to see if there is an appetite for that at a, as a choice school even, you know? I believe that there might be a market for that, so to speak. And then that would be one day a week that that school wouldn't even be in session, which would free up some drivers too. While we're being creative, I just thought that I would bring that up. And I know five days a week in school tends to be kind of sacred, but I've had more than a few people reach out to me as parents, as teachers, that seem to have, feel like there's some value in that. So, I'm just sharing what's been shared with me. I can't say I really thought about that, but it's an idea. The other thing is, is that I've been around long enough to remember when our bus drivers and our bus aides were some of the highest paid in Florida, really. And then when we had our Great Recession and there was some changes, I remember specifically bus aide pay really got cut. And coming from a district where we had two externally operated schools with longer days, the extra hour of instruction on top of an external operator, we're talking millions of dollars that we have spent to make that happen. And my point here is, back to Vice Chair King, is that when kids are coming to school consistently late and teachers are still bound to teach them and are held accountable for their test scores, just like a kid that's being dropped off in car line on time every day, that creates an imbalance. And so, to me, I would like this board to think very hard about what we're paying our bus drivers and what we are paying our bus aides because to me, it is money in the bank to pay people enough and support them enough so that our transportation issues smooth out, become very reliable again, we have strong discipline that we back up and we back up our drivers, you know, the whole thing. And I do think that financially, this is something to consider because we're gonna either pay for it now or we're gonna pay even more dearly for it later, is what I'm thinking. So, I'd just like to put that out there. And then the question of where would this money come from? Well, we're gonna be having conversation about our funding referendum because we've been talking about sunrise, sunset today and our funding referendum is gonna be sunsetting, the one mil. And right now, it reads for a pair of professionals, but maybe we could consider adding bus aides to that language because not every single bus needs an aide, but almost every single bus needs an aide. And we're also looking at our ESE, you know, our Exceptional Student Education Special Needs Kids that per their IEP are supposed to have support on that bus, you know, morning and afternoon. And that becomes an issue. So, again, I think that we're being penny wise and pound foolish if we don't look at total compensation and discipline as part of solving this long-term. That's my soapbox and I'm sticking to it. Board Member Campbell.
Browning had something to say, but if you don't mind, I wanted to kind of piggyback on what you were just saying and I want to touch on so many great conversations here. Let me start with what you said and then we'll go from there. I was just having this conversation this week, especially if we are potentially going down the avenue of asking our voters for additional money from a referendum standpoint. I received another email this week, not regarding transportation, but regarding another department. When we have history on our side to see people who've been with our district for 20-plus years and say, "The district used to have this and then the recession hit and these things were taken and they never got added back." And I personally would like to see that study of where all the dollars were, where all they got cut, and now we know that our property values are high. Yes, we have inflation happening, I understand that as well, but our property values are higher than we've ever had, our budget is higher than it's ever been, yet some of these areas that actually impact students, including transportation, have not come back to those pre-recession levels and we're definitely out of a recession. Yes, we've just been in a pandemic. So, I understand all of that, but from a financial standpoint, I would like to see, especially if we're about to go ask our voters for funds again, for us to actually be able to say, "Here are the pots of money that have been coming in, here are where the pots have been reduced, how we can use those dollars, how we can't use them." That's a lot of information, but it would be helpful, especially when we start talking about these areas that were cut so long ago, that were pre-all of us during the recession and those that didn't get brought back and why or where those dollars went in addition. So, I'm just gonna leave that there, but that's my thought on that. I love the idea of the school bus, or school time study as well. I, as a parent at Bellevue High School, have said, "Oh, my goodness, the times between Bellevue High School and Bellevue Middle, if you hit that car line at the wrong time, buddy, if those school times, just those two schools alone being side by side and Liberty and Hamit Bowen may be the same, we don't have very many spots where schools are side by side. And if their school start times don't coincide really well, it really can impact." And I can only imagine, we're having to let buses in because, you know, have to have a traffic officer often, sometimes there to let buses in because of the car line. So, I think that there's great conversation to be had there. But I also wanted to mention to Ms. Rora, I loved some of the short-term solutions that you have. The professional development on teacher workdays is brilliant. Investing in professional development in this district is huge and we need to continue to do that at all levels. And so, that is terrific. I love that. I also love the idea of the attendance matters based on zone because then you allow your employees within that zone to hold each other accountable and they all benefit and that there's something to be said for accountability within your camaraderie of your department, essentially. But I also wanted to ask quickly, because I know Mr. Vianello and I mentioned, or he and I were talking about this, oh, I want to say this too. I really appreciated the opportunity to go out and participate in serving the transportation at the zone that I was serving and actually, Mr. Vianello happened to be there as well. And I felt like some of the bus drivers like to have a listening ear at a level that could make an impact. And so, while certainly having your staff and others in transportation go out and serve, I would like the opportunity for, at least to know what the schedules are whenever we're rewarding these employees, that if we could go or, you know, administrative staff, something like that, to be able to go as well. I think having that listening ear also showed them, please communicate. If you're not getting the resolution that you're at, like, yes, some of these issues, they had communicated to their direct supervisor or something. Well, if you're not getting resolution, all employees, if you're not getting resolution there, then go to the next level up and just ensure that we're working the chain and making sure that you don't have to get to the school board member and copy us on every email. You don't have to copy Dr. Gullett on every email. It may just be one more level that might be able to get that resolution. So, if there's a way to continue that, almost like a sounding board, bulletin board, communication way that they can feel as if they're being heard, I think that there was a lot of value to that. But in that conversation, Mr. Vianello and I, we were, he also mentioned that here comes the bus app. And I would have to say, there has to be, at least close to my home, that a route must have a bus driver that's missing because students have been standing in my neighborhood and they're not usually there at the time when I'm leaving. I always wanted to pick them up, like, can we take them to school? There's too many. But it makes me wonder, the status on the here comes the bus. Okay, thank you. Sorry. Thank you. If you don't mind updating. Thank you.
Yes.
And I did want to just interject that I think Vice Chair King, you do need to leave shortly, is that?
Oh.
Okay, but I wanted to make sure you had a chance to share anything else that was on your mind.
No, I shared what I wanted to.
Okay, so you're good. Okay, I just wanted to, all right, great. Dr. Gullett.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I had two items and I want to make sure that we don't forget, we have two wonderful principals here as well and so we want to hear from them. But I was going to share the add to the conversation was the communication. Wasn't gonna name the app, but I did speak with the team last year and suggested that we look at a communication protocol and that is underway. We are still waiting for approval from that company to move forward, but we are very close, I hope, within a week perhaps or two weeks. But essentially what this is and has been done very successfully in other districts, I think you will find very exciting, I've experienced it elsewhere, that it provides a mechanism, because we have GPS on our buses, that on your phone, you can track where the bus is. So, you know exactly where that bus is. So, it's not a long-term solution to our problems, but it's a way to improve our communication.
And safety.
And safety. So, parents will have access to that, staff will have access to that. And so, we had this conversation, didn't we, last year, when I mentioned it and Ms. Rora was familiar with it at the time. So, it's taken quite some time, unfortunately, but we have heard back from the company and hopefully, we are very, very close.
And I appreciate that because I've been pushing too and Attorney Powers knows, "Okay, does it take the school board chair to get this going?" Because we really want it and we need it and we've already said that we're gonna have it. So, people go on vacation and things like that. We're trying to get things done.
It's a terrific tool. So, if we may move forward, Madam Chair, with providing an opportunity for Ms. Lepira to come forward first and then followed by Ms. Forthseith, that would be great.
Board Member Browning? Board Member Browning? Yes, did you have something quickly?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Yes, quickly, thank you. I got out of the loop with Allison, that's fine, and then yourself and then, okay. So, I would just like to say that I wanted to ask the question on the idea of shortening hours. I am, this school board member is absolutely, that's a deal breaker. I am not in favor in any of the staggering and all of that, and I understand the complication of that, but shortening of hours of what we deliver to the student is a real deal breaker for me.
It wouldn't do that.
No.
No, no, I know, but I think it's important to make it clear, especially to the parents because people, you know, they go to work, they have schedules, they have this, they have that, you know, it's a very complicated situation. Then the idea of compensation, I'd like to just assure you that at least from, from I believe this board, compensation is something that we're very cognizant, cognitive of, that it has to, it's critical. I mean, these people have a job, the drivers, they have a job and it leads me to two things. One, the discussion here has just been outstanding. Now, this is exactly the way I would describe appropriate, just dynamite discussion that will actually move the ball forward.
These are our work sessions.
Pardon me?
These are our work sessions.
Well, it's just incredible. It's very powerful. And the idea of things being out to discuss and not in a, with that, I'll talk about it later, but that special C on it where it goes like undercover and it's not spoken to on some items are like a million dollars or whatever. Every time we can bust the dollars down, every time we do, the beauty of that is, we may end up still spending the money, but it can go to something like this, it's so critically important to our mission, which is getting the kids to school. So, every dollar, every million dollars, every, you know, whatever it is. And then whether it be external or it be internal, I'm for the employee. I want the employee to do well. I love building wealth. So, I just have the employee in mind. And how it's structured corporately, wow, I'm, whichever gives the most benefit to our mission and to the employee, I'm for it.
Yes, sir. And as always, we will route efficiently, always keeping the students in mind. And when we work over those times and bring back the scenarios, you'll have an opportunity to see those.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rora. Hello, Principal Lepira.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here just to share our challenges at the elementary school level and the principal at Saddlewood Elementary School, the second biggest elementary school in Marion County. There's 900 and about 22 students and 479 of those students are bus riders. So, this year has been a challenge. I'm not gonna lie, I'm not gonna sugarcoat that, it's been a challenge. We do have buses running 30 to 45 minutes late, many days. It has gotten better, Ms. Rora said it has gotten better and Mr. Vianello, I've been working with him, as well as Julie Moore in Transportation and the routers, it has gotten better. But when students come to school late, like we had said, that is instructional minutes. So, that is a challenge for us. One of the things I did, we've done, is we've got those buses off as soon as they show up at 7:00 a.m. We have staff that comes in, I come in. We try to get the buses in because we have buses that have two and three routes. So, some of our drivers drop off, as soon as we can get those students off, we take them, we have them, they go back out, they come back, they go back out. So, that's happening, you know, at some, at my school in particular. So, we have opened our buses starting at 7:00 as well as my car line. So, my car line is very, very long. That has created some challenges, Mr. Vianello came out to see, some challenges because some of our bus riders are becoming in cars now. So, one day I tracked it, it was 98 students that came in a car that were normally bus riders. So, that's another 98 cars in the car line. So, that's impacted my whole start time. However, we do see some things moving forward and becoming positive. Again, we have to support our drivers. I believe fully, fully that it is our job, it's my job, to make them feel a part of my community and a part of my school. And we try to support them in everything, in every way that we can. We're always at the buses. I do that and my dean does that, I have other staff members out there. We support our drivers. It is a state statute, 6.03, that principals have to teach bus rules within the first six weeks of school. So, we do that. We teach our students the bus rules and we reinforce those rules. We get on those buses, we tell them the rules, we explain the why. I think it's very important for our students to understand the why. Why is it important to stay seated? Why is it important to not be loud and screaming and crazy on that bus? Why is that important? That is important because you can get hurt. Yesterday's a perfect example, I'm gonna get off track a little bit, but yesterday was a perfect example because I rode the bus home. So, I rode my bus home and two times, cars pulled out in front of drivers, this driver, Mr. Andrew, he's amazing. Riding with him is like riding on the Disney Channel. He talks about the weather and how long it's gonna take to get there and "I hope you had a great day and a ride on the bus" and he's amazing, our students love him. But two times, cars pulled out in front of him, two times. So, I was able to stop and say, "Boys and girls, did you see that? Did you see that car pull out in front? What would happen if Mr. Andrew had to turn around and was having to talk to you because you weren't listening? What if he hit that car? What would happen to you, to the driver? This is not just about the kids on the bus and the driver, that's about our community, the people that are around us in our community. That could be your family member." So, I tried to explain that to them and really give them the why. So, really enforcing those bus rules are very, very important for us as principals to get on, the deans to get on, to really support them. So, we will continue to ride buses and do that as many times as we can, especially some of our most challenging rides, as well as. some of our most challenging rides, as well as the ones that are, you know, the, the heaviest, the heavy loads. Let's see, what else? We also do a lot of reminders on our school morning show. If you're a bus rider, boys and girls, this is how we do this. I've sent a message on Class Dojo this week, it's a school-wide app that sends it out to all of my parents, I have about 500 hits on that a day. And I talked about, this is Bus Safety Week. So we talked about reminding your children of the rules, remind, help me. And then, of course, I ended it with, parents, I rode the bus today, and our driver said that Saddlewood is the best school to drive for. So I said, your students are doing a great job, so continue to support us. So ending on the positive and thanking those parents are really important. The other thing is, sometimes our bus drivers get frustrated with the student's behavior, obviously. They get frustrated when sometimes our families might not be very respectful, when they stop at the drive, the route, they stop at that stop, and they may get angry, or they're just upset because it's late, whatever it may be. And so just us being able to tell the driver and supporting them, calling those families, talking to those students, taking them off the bus when they come to school, and just try to start their day in a positive way, but try to fix the problem before we get to a discipline referral. Elementary is very different, and we try to work with them, and we try to get them on the right track. But if, if, if a driver writes a discipline referral, and it gets to that point, you know, we do have a consequence for those students, unfortunately. And those students will, you know, not have a right to school. We give our drivers everything that my staff gets, staff t-shirts, mugs, luncheons, they know that they're a part of the school. We remind them in the morning, hey, don't forget, we're having a luncheon today, so before you go out on your route, come in and grab something. So all of those things are really important to retain these drivers, because that is a hard job. Listening to the radio and driving, just sitting there, listening to the radio, hearing the students, and driving, has to be probably the hardest job, the, one of the hardest jobs in the school system. And so I really have tried to also as well, is not only have my families appreciate the drivers, but my students. So this week, and this week I've been getting on the bus every morning, and we've been talking about bus rules, and I ride in on through the parking lot, and every day, I've told my students, please say thank you to your driver today. Please say thank you to your driver today. They, and yesterday, the same thing, when they got off that bus, say thank you to your driver today. Thank you for bringing me to school. Thank you for bringing me to school. And when Mr. Andrew does his Disney thing, they are cheering for him, and they love it. He starts their ride like that, and he ends their ride like that. So I was so impressed. You know, we have wonderful drivers, we just have to continue to help them build relationships. It's all about relationships with our students. They, they are there for the right reasons, and we just have to continue to support them and motivate them as much as we can. I mean, I've had a bus driver buy an alarm clock for a student, so she could get to school on time, so she could set her alarm, and she could get to school on time. Those are all things that our drivers do, they're wonderful. Do we have challenges? Absolutely, we have challenges. I'm not here to say we don't. But I think if we continue to work together as the school, with the board, and transportation, like, we can solve this, we can come up with solutions. And I really think it's important that we, it takes all of us working together, and if we don't continue to do this, then I, I feel like we'll continue to, to not make any headway. So thank you for your time today, I appreciate it. Hope you have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Lapira. Your energy and enthusiasm is contagious. You're amazing.
I want to go back to school, that was great. That was wonderful.
Yeah, that's the goal.
We have fantastic principals.
Yeah, that was tremendous. Teach etiquette, that's wonderful.
Move that mic.
Good morning, Board and Dr. Gollum. Thanks again. You guys have heard a lot about transportation, I'm not going to repeat all those pieces, I'm just going to kind of tell you what it looks like in real life at the secondary level. Secondary and elementary are very different in terms of bus expectations, in terms of how we do all this, and in dealing with those three areas of focus, the driver shortage, retention and support, and morale. At secondary, we try lots of things, right? We have lots of students, those first six weeks of school, and I did have a teacher who was so tired of his first period being late every day, he stepped up and he drives a bus now. So he drives the bus in the morning, and he's still in first period way before it starts, so that he can get instructions started. So it got to the point to where my staff was like, all right, what are we going to do? And we had to all get on board and do it. So I think everybody stepping up is huge, I think us all being on the same page is huge. You know, those kids missing first period at the secondary level, we've had to change a lot of schedules. We, we changed 47 schedules of kids who had really rigorous, maybe even high school-level courses at the middle school, that we had to switch so their academic future didn't get waylaid. And that's happening at secondary schools around the district, and we've, we've done those, and we've been creative with that. Teachers are giving grace and flexibility, it's not the students' fault that they're late for school, we understand that, so working towards that. On my campus too, we open early, so that buses can drop off and go out and get those second and third routes, like we talked about earlier, in the afternoon. It's, it's, it's a frustrating time sometimes, we have buses that are there an hour maybe after every single day, they've never been home at dismissal time. So with that, though, we've created a captive audience, and so now we have teachers who are mentoring groups of students on some of our most vulnerable buses, where they do like motivational Monday, test-taking strategies Tuesday, and I've worked that into teachers' duty rotations, so that they go in there and they make relationships with those kids, which is important. We have kind of an adopt the bus, where a teacher has a sign that says, bus 3044, we believe in you, you know you can do this. 3044 is a part of Liberty, do your best, do what's right. And teachers stand there as the kids load the bus. Again, a little elementary-ish for my liking, but it gets kids thinking that we, we believe they can do well, and, and it's hard, because on that bus, it's difficult whenever there are three people in one seat, like, my side, well, maybe I'm not a good point of reference, but like, three of me are bigger, sitting in one seat, that's huge. And on the secondary, high school level, yeah, they're all bigger than me, so I get it, but three of us sitting in one, like, our, our personal space is occupied. So trying to get them ready to go and say, hey, guys, you can do this, all you got to do is get home, that's what we want, just get home. So really reiterating that. Expectations and consequences, I will be the first to say that was really hard the first couple of weeks of school. I, 45% of my school-wide referrals were off-of-bus referrals, and, and that's big. Five major incidents, some that led to alternative placements, like, school bus behavior at the beginning of the school year was hard. We, we haven't had a major incident since the third week of school, and we've reTaught expectations, whether or not it's me acting like a crazy woman, or just everybody finally understanding that we are going to follow through, I think that's really important. We don't ride buses for a tweet or a picture, like, we ride buses to problem solve, and so creating seating charts for drivers, I know my kids, I know who can't sit next to each other, creating seating charts for drivers, having those conversations, sometimes whenever the kids get off, and it's just me and the driver, and being able to talk about how to develop relationships, strategies to develop relationships, maybe, hey, did you see how I mentioned I liked his jacket? Like, pick something, just, just like something, try to make a personal connection with them. Or, hey, did you see, whenever we did this, they were totally different today, right? That's all, and, and sometimes it's, oh, you were on the bus, but really it's teaching school-wide expectations as an extension as we get on the bus. So I think that's really important. I've offered up myself to, to do some driver training, if we, I, we've spent hours together trying to come up with ideas, and, and I will happily, I will happily do that, to teach relationships, and appreciate communication. The bus drivers love that when the deans get on the bus in the afternoon, they say, hey, I saw that referral, you know that's not okay, he's not on the bus this afternoon, we need to support him. And I think we're doing that really well across our district, and knowing that we're all on a team, right? In the instruction, we talk about, we talk about our core and how everything relates to the task, well, everything here relates to our students. So it's the drivers, the parents, the school level, but it's all part of what we do for students and help them be successful. So as long as we're on one team, and loving on them, and doing all those things, I feel like we're headed in the right direction as well. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Board Member Browning, did you have something?
Yes, as part of the education, I, I'm, I'm so impressed, because you're, you've got this opportunity, and yes, you are transporting, but you're also educating. Everything you just said will benefit an individual as they grow up in society, and become a productive member of society. I'm, I'm very impressed.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I was just going to say that I love, thank you ladies, both of you for coming. I, I love hearing, specifically in your two schools, how you have extended the school culture into understanding, even though transportation, I had this conversation, we were serving meals, even though transportation is a district department, and schools are schools, ensuring that you understand that those bus drivers are extensions of your school, because some of those bus drivers have been your school's bus drivers for a really long time. And if all of our schools across the district would understand that same importance and extend their school culture into, and I'm not saying, I'm not calling on any particular school, I don't know that it's not happening, but I'm just emphasizing the need for it, and, and welcoming them to your staff meetings, offering them the same benefits that your staff receives at any given time, just understanding that they're a part of your school culture, and that's incredibly important. So thank you, thank you.
More comments?
Thank you, Ms. Lapira, and Ms. Forsythe, I'm Ms. Lapira, I was out there, you didn't see me, but I saw you all, the car line the other morning. Huge, huge problem as far as the traffic, and trying to get, navigate that area with such congestion, with those are very two-lane roads going into your school. So I know that we're going to figure out some kind of way to, to alleviate that, that stress, Ms. Forsythe as well, out there with you at Liberty. One thing I did want to talk about, I want to commend, I have to commend, I have to commend Ms. Roar and her whole department. I stress this, and I say it enough, and I know these other board members do too, concerning the job that transportation does. We, you're getting a lot of flack right now because of parties or being late, however, you safely transport a lot, a lot of kids, every day, to school and back school. They may be getting there a little bit late, they may be getting home later, but I want to commend you, to commend you for the job that you're doing. It's, we're just in a different time, because if you could get them there on time, all on time, it would have already been done, and we're working towards getting that goal accomplished. So I, I ask the public to be patient a little bit longer, as we continue to try to work this out. I ask the schools to be patient as well, because I do know, it's frustrating, I get the calls, I get the emails from the parents, from the teachers, they're saying, hey, I can't, I can't instruct when they're not here. We, we understand, and we know that this is, is a, it's a snowball effect, it's just going all the way around, so. But I do want to also thank Mr. Christian, the other week, he sounded a scholar about school's bus safety, and the things that are happening on buses, I've, I actually watched some videos and seen some things that are happening on these school buses. A bus driver and a bus aide have an incredible task, to be driving a missile, to be driving a missile on a congested highway, and then to have 40 kids behind them, and then two of them decide to have a fight on the bus while the bus is moving. That is, that is the, one of the most dangerous situations that could ever happen, and I've, I've been seeing that, that increase in those things happening. Why it's happening, I don't know what the frustration is behind all of that, but I, I saw them. And I, I want to encourage our, our staff to do what we can to do, to alleviate that. Discipline is, is, is required when it gets to those types of things, because you're putting, not only, you're putting the whole bus in jeopardy of an accident or flipping or something like that, to that caliber. And then I also want to commend this, a bus driver, the other day I was driving through a neighborhood, and this bus was pulled over on the side of the road. And I went, I, I turned around, I went back to see what was going on, and the bus, someone had stood on the side of the road, and as the bus was going by, with kids on it, in a neighborhood, had taken a rock and throwed it at the front of the bus, and had hit right where the driver's head would, if it would have been a bullet and went through that windshield, the driver would have been hit. Thank God, the way the buses are designed, the windshields are designed, it did not go all the way through. And there were kids on the bus, and I just kept, I kept my mind, because of my, my background in law enforcement, I kept one to safety with this thing, it was a neighborhood, and here it is, if this driver would not have been on her job, had not been a professional, she could have panicked, she could have driven into several houses, anything, I mean, at the point she had a minor cut on her hand, but she had glass all down her shirt. We, we have to do what we can to make sure that these people are safe, and I, I want to, I want to get with our state attorney's office, our law enforcement officers, when people are doing stuff like that, in regards to what they, what that person did, they need to be prosecuted to the full extent of the law, because they just had, she had, I think she had 10 or 11 kids on that bus. Not only the 10, 11 kids whose lives on that bus, her life, and not only their lives, but everybody in that neighborhood that she could have taken out at that one point, because of someone having a, doing dumb. Thank God, they caught the person. But this, that's just one incident that I personally saw. There's other incidents that happen around our county, every day with our buses and transportation, so Ms. Roar, we, whatever we need to do, if we got to come out there and serve breakfast, lunch, donuts, whatever it is, we need to do, whatever our schools need to do to support our bus drivers and our bus aides, because we say bus drivers, but our bus aides are on the bus with them as well, we need to support. And parents, I want to, I want to, I want to say this loud and clear, have that conversation with your kids. It is a privilege to ride the bus, it is a privilege. And tell them they need, they need to behave on the bus, there should not be fights on the bus, because you're putting everybody's life in danger, the bus driver, as well as your other fellow students. So please, and, and Madam Superintendent, I, I want to encourage our department that, our district, that when we have situations on those, on those buses, that we do what we can to support the student, but we also have to make a, make it be known that some things just cannot be tolerated, especially on a moving bus.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings, and yes, thank you to Principal Lapira, and Principal Forsythe, and the whole transportation team. Mr. Viennello, thank you so much for, for stepping up, and kind of being our representative too, at, at our level, to really begin to, to drill down and, and help tame this beast, you know, known as transportation. What, what we're dealing with is, is nationwide, but, but we can fix it here, you know, it's just gotten a whole lot worse because of, of the pandemic, and it's about expectations, and I think about overloaded buses, and how difficult that makes it for kids to be calm and, and be comfortable. So I, I do believe that as we begin to get more drivers, and thank you, Mr. Ivory, for, for jumping in with us for this, because that's what's going to make the difference. And I think about substitutes in a classroom too, you know? They are, in my opinion, when I was a teacher, I would tell my students, on the very seldom times that I have to be out, the substitute is an honored guest in this classroom, because y'all have the benefit of knowing how this classroom runs, and you know how this classroom runs, so don't try to say you don't. And, and I do not want to hear that this substitute has been mistreated because I've been gone, you know? And 99% of the time, because of having the relationships with the kids in advance, and sharing those expectations over and over again, and demonstrating that level of respect on a daily basis, that turns the tide. And it's just very sad in society today, that it seems to be A-OK to call people out, to be nasty to each other, to come in with this idea that you're going to tell someone about themselves, and, and our kids reflect that. You know, so, so you, you reap what you sow, and I could not be more proud of, of the folks that are sitting out here that I'm looking at today for refusing to accept that as normal. What, what's normal is raising kids to be functional, contributing citizens, today's riders or tomorrow's drivers. And the training piece that you mentioned, Board Member Campbell, is so important, and having been an aide myself, it can be a little bit of an eye-opening experience to get cussed out by a kindergarten or the very first time. And so the, the level of lack of discipline has become a huge issue. But again, kids really thrive on knowing who's in charge, and that helps calm them down significantly. There's so many things that you said that just resonated with me because of my background, and, and I've seen it work over and over and over again, but, but you have to have enough people with enough knowledge to be able to help shoulder the, the whole load. So I enjoyed being at the Hillcrest Compound, serving lunch the other day, I'll, I'll be serving lunch the other day. I'll, I'll be at Liberty soon, and it is important for our drivers, because they are isolated, just by the nature of their job. They're isolated in a bus, and sometimes they think that, you know, they're not seen, they're not heard, they're, they're not supported, they're not thought of. And the more that we can visibly, you know, be available is, is really important, and it is part of the team, you know. We've got, we've got the schools, and we've got the parents, and we've got the transportation, and by extension of the schools, you know, it's all of us. So, thanks again for, for everything that you do. The Sky Alert was very well received. I got a lot of great feedback on that. I would suggest beginning and ending every nine weeks with it as a reminder. Just saying it once i- is good, but I think it needs to be said often, and then connected and backed up, so that, oh, we've heard this now, you know, at the beginning and end of every nine weeks. And in between, there's been a lot of, of follow-up and, and a lot of commitment and a lot of following through. So, anything that we can do to help that continue, I think you've heard from this board that we are all for it. And thank you, Dr. Gullett, for how you have positioned people to work and, and help make this better.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes. I, I just take a little bit of a different look, and, and the excitement that I heard out here, the positive nature, it does want me to go back to school. I mean, it takes me back to my memories. And I want to say that, that the idea, there are problems, I get that. But the positive nature of what we have in this, in this district is just incredible. I see, I own some property on forty-two. I see the buses come up. It's so professional. I see them move along. It's, it's, it's so correct, it's so positive. If I was running, if I owned the district, I would be so proud of the way it operates, because we have maybe ninety-five percent of correct. I mean, I mean, really on the money. And then we have problems, but we've got sterling people that address the problems. Starts with the superintendent, goes right straight down on that operational sense. So, like, like the, the rock that went in, it was, I, I, I'm not sure, but I think it was a forty-one-year-old person with, with mental health problems. That's an issue that can happen. It does not reflect on our school district at all, other than it was a bus. It could have been anything. It could have been a, you know, threw it at a Greyhound, I don't, at a Greyhound bus, whatever. But the positive nature, I just want to get that message across, and I'm so grateful at the professional level of people that we have getting the job done day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else regarding transportation updates?
No, that concludes transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there any public comment? Okay. Hearing none. We will move on to board concerns, and I wanted to recognize the board's attorney, Jeremy Powers. I believe you have a request for us, sir?
Board members, I'm notifying you, the attorney Suzanne Green, or designee of the Vice Cole Law Firm, has informed me that advice is needed regarding claim number eight-nine-two-four-zero-zero, styled AM, a minor, by and through his natural parent and guardian, CM, versus the School Board of Marion County, Florida. Pursuant to two-eight-six-point-oh-one-one Florida statutes known as the Government and the Sunshine Act, on behalf of Attorney Green, I'm requesting an attorney-client session with the board for the purpose of discussing the evaluation and/or compromise of said claim. I've asked the board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons attending to be published. It suggested that the attorney-client session be held at eleven o'clock AM during a recess of this November fourth, twenty-twenty-one administrative briefing and work session scheduled. As required by the statute, only the following individuals will be present: Nancy Throer, Board Chair, Kelly King, Vice Chair, Eric Cummings, School Board Member, Don Browning, School Board Member, Allison Campbell, School Board Member, Superintendent Diane Gullett, Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney, and Suzanne Green, Esquire, or her designee of the Vice Cole Law Firm. I've asked a court reporter to record the session, also as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the clerk of the school board. Upon conclusion of any litigation and/or settlement of all claims arising out of this incident, the transcript will be made public record.
Thank you. I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section two-eight-six-point-oh-one-one Florida statutes to discuss a pending claim. If there are no objections, the attorney-client session should occur during a recess of the November fourth, twenty-twenty-one administrative briefing and work session, starting at eleven AM or as soon thereafter as this, as the matter may be heard. So, I'm asking you to check your calendars, please, for November fourth. This is time-sensitive, and we really do need to get this done.
And the time, the time on that was, uh, the fourth, at, uh, the recess was going to be at?
Eleven AM.
Eleven AM.
Because we're paying a court reporter, so even if we're not done with our work session, we'll just recess, do this.
Sure.
And then go. You okay?
Yes.
All right.
I will also indicate, Chair Throer, that at the end of that session, at the end of the November fourth session, there will also be two additional exempt confidential matters which will occur after the meeting on eleven-four. So, those should be both quite brief.
Okay. All right. So, as usual, we'll have a full day of work session and other matters. All right. Was there anything else on that?
Not on that. I do have additional comments whenever.
Okay. Yes, I wanted you to continue, because we had spoken about the funding referendum dates and timelines.
Fourth is a workshop?
Yes.
Additionally, I need the district to designate a person, and we, I have a person in mind as to OCR case oh-four-dash-seventeen-one-six-three-nine for mediation. I need the district to designate a person or persons with authority to settle the complaint to attend mediation with me. There's currently only one issue remaining on this case. My office has been working with staff to secure the district's position regarding that remaining concern. The person's assigned to attend mediation with me must have full settlement authority on behalf of the district, and that would be from the ESE Department, and that would be Ms. Kidwell.
Okay, the ESE Director.
Right.
I have no objections.
Okay.
What else?
I'm fine.
Thank you.
Additionally, as to cell tower matters, we need permission for the assigned outside counsel. We've transferred outside counsel to Renee Thompson to negotiate a new lease with American Towers, and as may be necessary with any other active cell tower site. My recommendation as to American Towers would be to use the original lease entered back in two, in two thousand thirteen, to preserve the board's relationship with this already paying tenant. In my review, I discovered some rather critical chain of title errors in the previous lease with previous counsel. That was caused by past improper transfers with the tenant. So, it's in the best interest of the party to correct these lease defects. I just need permission for assigned counsel, outside counsel to negotiate that new lease.
And this outside counsel is one that has continued familiarity with all of our cell tower woes.
Yes.
Okay.
And that should conclude what I have to address at this point.
Okay. And I did want to get some updates on the dates and timelines for our school funding referendum ceremonially, ceremonial, and also formally. It has to be submitted to the county commission to be accepted on, to give their approval for it to be accepted onto the ballot. And what makes this go-around of the funding referendum timeline different is that in the past, it was always on the primary ballot, which of course is in August. But by state law now, any funding referendums locally must go on the November ballot. So, that changes our, our typical timeline. And I just thought it would be good, especially since Board Member Browning is, is new to us. And also, too, we need a refresher as to when we really need to get serious about coming to full consensus on the ballot language and get it submitted based on the stated timelines.
I passed my cheat sheet on that back along with, with there, so let me, let me get that back there. We're waiting on specific dates. I can tell you that Mr. Wilcox will likely be present here to discuss some of those issues with us also on the fourth of November.
Okay.
We do have, uh, let's see. And of course, it depends on what election the school board wants to place, where we want to place its, the ballot. If the, the school board must adopt a resolution for one-half cent sales tax, there's agenda deadlines and school board meeting deadlines that we have to meet that within. Our actions to be taken, first, providing County Attorney Matthew Guy-Minter with a draft copy of the school board resolution and prepare a draft county commission resolution for review. We have to get that approved by Mr. Minter before it's placed on the board's agenda. That way, we can avoid having to amend. The county commission meetings, at which the county commission could act on the school board resolution to adopt a resolution to put the sales tax on the ballot, we've got to get their agenda in order to be able to know exactly what those dates are. And I can do that posthaste.
Thank you.
The deadline for ballot language to be delivered to the supervisor of elections would be six-seventeen of twenty-twenty-two for the August twenty-third primary, and eight-twenty-six of two thousand twenty-two for the November eighth general.
Would you repeat those dates again, please?
Six-seventeen of two thousand twenty-two for the August twenty-third primary, and eight-twenty-six of twenty-twenty-two for the November eighth general.
So, it'd be August, because it has to go in the general.
Right. And, and I hear you speaking about the, the penny or half cent, but I was talking about the one mil funding referendum.
Yes. And it's, it's the same.
Same timeline.
Same timeframe, same process.
Okay.
Now, we will have, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We will have workshops on this, or have we had workshops on this? We have not.
We will.
We will. And, and the, the timing on that, is that determined yet?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, but it will be. Second, just a follow-up question. On your outside counsel, is that a repeat, uh, outside counsel we hire for that?
For the cell towers.
Oh, for the cell tower issue?
Yes.
This is someone who is, is new to us as outside counsel, but is known to us.
But will repeat?
Will, will be handling all of our cell phone, phone tower.
So, we're able to repeat with those people?
Yes, absolutely.
When we do need that.
And they are truly local, local counsel.
And we can rely on, on the continuity of that.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Which is part of the reason that she was selected.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So, we don't have a choice as far as the, the one mil funding referendum. If that's what we choose to put on the ballot for renewal, that has to go on the November ballot.
Correct. Yes, the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two general.
Okay.
And the deadline is?
Deadline for that is eight-twenty-six.
It's eight-twenty-six. Okay.
But we should, Madam Chair, I recommend that we go ahead and get something scheduled as soon as possible. We, we can't kid the can down the road, and if we're going to, as a board, agree that we're going for it, then we need to start putting that message out there as early rather than later, if that's what we want.
Exactly.
And to the county commission having to approve it also. I mean, there, there's steps that we need to, so, starting to have the conversation in January or something like that is probably a good timeline.
Yeah. I was going to suggest January.
To just start having the conversation.
The better, I think, that we can have multiples if we need it.
Yes.
There's an awful lot involved in that.
Right.
That's a huge, yeah, huge issue.
And the good news is, is that we've been through this twice already, and the, our community has been extraordinarily supportive, especially on the last one. It passed by over seventy percent. And I think that's a tribute to bringing the message to the community and helping them understand, and being very specific about where the dollars, the tax dollars go, and also the Oversight Committee that we have that is made up of citizens, that each of us get a chance to appoint to what is called our ICROC, which is the Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee. And they, it's, they're, they're our watchdogs when it comes to the spending of, of this particular pot of money. So, yes, let's get the county commissioners' scheduled meetings. Let's get on a work session for January to get this ball rolling, so we have time to have more than one work session if necessary. Thank you. And that way, we'll be well-positioned going into the new year. So, the first one would be January sixth. Why don't we start with that?
Boy.
Sounds good? Okay. Happy New Year to us. All right. Anything else for us, Attorney Powers?
I do not believe so.
January fifth.
January sixth, it will be a work session anyway. Yeah, and you'll get a calendar invite. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right. Moving on to other comments and concerns. Dr. Gullett.
Good afternoon, or is it, it's still morning, again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your input and feedback as always today. We really appreciate that. I know the team appreciates your support. And I do not have any further comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much always for your hard work. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, did you have something?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Madam Chair, board members, good morning. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning.
I am going to distribute to you, this is twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three board implementation. It is just a draft, as we know in the past. It is an ongoing document that changes. You will be able to review and see items that are coming up. In red, you will see the items that require rule development, rulemaking. Some are our adopted plans, such as a code of conduct, the SP&amp;P. So, those items are required for us to go through rulemaking and rule development. As this is updated, I will continuously send you an updated version, so that you guys can see moving forward everything that is coming forward to you. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, any feedback, let me know. I'll be happy to answer them. This will be on the November ninth board packet for your approval.
Okay. We will review it in the meantime.
Yes.
Now, these are, these are items that we can see out far enough through twenty-two, twenty-three that, that then can, can just fit into the calendar.
Currently, these are the items. You will not see them on there. You'll just see them right here via the draft. They haven't been fully created yet.
Uh, on that. But, but, but we're able to do this because we can see out ahead things that, that will naturally come before us over twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then we'll fill in with other things as they.
As they come up.
Okay, excellent, excellent.
Okay.
Will this be out on the, on the, on the website?
We can. We can put it out there on the portal. Again, just remember, it is fluid, so, meaning every time we do a work session and you all add things to it, that will have to be adjusted, and so everyone can see that.
As long as it's clearly stated draft, because sometimes what will happen is people will take that as gospel, because it has been posted, and then when it changes, and it's like, so, we, we, information we put out there, we want it to be pretty concise and.
Well, on your board docs, you'll see the list of topics, and it matches this. So, you see that, even the public can see everything that's coming up, because it's on there. The only thing that's different between what's on board docs and what's here is the public clearings and the rule development and rulemaking, because those do change due to deadlines by the state and so forth. But everyone can see everything that's coming up, twenty-twenty through, on your board docs homepage. Under feature, you'll see topics and agenda. If you click that on, you'll be able to see, because it's just running. It's constantly running, and we're constantly updating it. We will update it today to reflect the items that you just added for January sixth and so forth.
Excellent, excellent. And it gets me thinking, too, about, we talked recently about starting our district Facebook page, is that correct? And it just won't have the ability to leave comments. And I'm not sure that this would be a natural fit or not. Can think more about it. But, but just as far as how the district does business, you know, the, the, did you know that this can be used for this, or this can't be used for that? You know, people go to Facebook for information, and what I'm finding is, is that a lot of times, the information is inaccurate. And then we get citizens that are really up in arms over things, because they, we're, it's misinformation. So, I'm really looking forward to that Facebook page. And when it comes to school finance, when it comes to all kinds of things, and things that we're talking about, and timelines, you know, somehow it's out in the community that, you know, we have made a firm decision on what we're doing, you know, with this building, and that it's going to be standing tomorrow. We're, we're talking years down the road for that to happen, and a lot will need to happen before that ever comes to fruition. So, anyway, I love the fact that we have the public's ear more and more, but let's make sure that what's going into their ear is accurate information, and I think they'll appreciate that.
And just one more comment. Board members, my responsibility and my role in this is just creating. just creating a timeline. If you have any specific questions to the Code of Conduct, to the SP&amp;P, you need to directly contact the business owner to that department. I cannot speak to any of the content of which is on here, I can only speak to the timeline and the dates that I have provided them.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Thank you so much, and of course, Chair Thoreau, you do know, you'll be speaking about the joint workshop?
Yes, yes, I've got that, and speaking of timelines, where are we with Neola?
That's what I was just going to bring up, thank you for doing that. We have, of the dates that I addressed with everyone, I only was able to find one of those dates that matched everything that we would have a quorum, along with availability of superintendent and myself. So, we have, the additional dates that Neola has given me are all in the first two weeks of December. Now, we have a training, the first, second, and third, and that leaves for us, we have to find two dates that work for everyone, or work for a quorum of us, for a quorum of you, for twelve, between twelve-seven, twelve-eight, twelve-nine, and twelve-ten. So I'll be sending that out today with that list, for everybody to please check those boxes, and I'd just like for the board to understand, it's going to be very critical that I get two more dates out of those remaining four that are there. We just, it's, it's been very difficult to juggle this schedule, and, but we, we have got to do it, so.
And would you include the one date that we already do have consensus on, and maybe send that out as a calendar invite?
I will.
So that we can get it on our calendars?
I will, yes.
Okay, because otherwise, something else will jump into its place, and then we'll
It's the twelve-seven, right?
Twelve, yeah, twelve-seven, eight, nine, and ten.
We have the twelve-seven already as a?
That's the week after the FSBA, because I think the original dates he had was our, the week of the FSBA conference we'll be going to, so it's the following week.
Right. Okay, so you'll get that to us?
I'll send that as soon as I get back to the office.
Okay, awesome, thank you. And this is also a reminder, for November eighth is our intergovernmental meeting, and I believe you said that you have not gotten responses yet from each board member? Okay, so please, check for that invite, please RSVP, we need to know, we'd love to have all of us there. If not all of us are there, it's not like we have to have a quorum, but we really should represent as fully as possible. Okay. Anything else from Legal?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, Board Member Cummings?
Good morning. I did want to go back to Legal. I stopped by Legal the other day based on a conversation that we had in reference to drafting a letter. You want to speak on that?
Yes, I, it is my recommendation that we draft a question for the Attorney General's Office to resolve any question regarding proper communication between staff and board members under sunshine law. Now, in order to draft a question for the Attorney General's Office, those, the Attorney Generals, they give advisory opinions, the state, local state attorney's office, they don't, the governor's office doesn't, it's the Attorney General's Office. So, the question needs to be narrowed to a very specific focus, such that it is not overly broad and doesn't really answer anything for us, or that it is overly detailed and it's only going to apply in a very limited situation. And so I am working to draft that question. I was hoping to have a draft before today, however, I'm just not going to be able to do that, I've got to read other Attorney General's opinions that have already applied. And then, once we have that, I can present that to the board, and we can send that to the Attorney General's, to the Attorney General's Office for them to review. If that is an acceptable course of conduct for us to do, you know, if all board members agree that I should, that I should do that, then I will, I will have that and have that ready for you to review by our next meeting.
Madam Chair, that conversation took place with the attorney, based on conversation that this board had in regards to a question, a question that Board Member Browning had, and I think we said we would have consensus that the attorney would do this letter, and we understand that the opinion, it could take months for this opinion to come back, but we want to do everything in a decent and orderly fashion to make sure that we got this letter submitted up and address Board Member Browning's concerns, as far as any potential or unintentional violations of sunshine.
Okay, and just to be clear, so far, there has not been any evidence of any sunshine violations based on the state attorney?
Correct, to my knowledge, there's been, there's been nothing that is an indication that there's, there's any sunshine law violation whatsoever, so, however, in an abundance of caution, and to be, to get a clear opinion rendered, not just from your own legal counsel, but also from the Attorney General's Office, whose job it is to specifically clarify matters, I would prepare the question for them. Now, what I don't want to do is, I don't, there's a lot of volume of questions they have answered over the years for numerous sunshine law complaints.
Right.
So, or sunshine law questions, so I don't want to submit a question that may have been partially already answered, I want to submit one that is finely tuned to the questions that were presented that we have here, so.
Okay, and you'll be, and you'll be bringing us a draft at our next meeting?
Right, and I mean, I can.
Can you email it ahead of time?
I can, what I can do.
If that's appropriate.
Yes, what I can, what I can do is, I can, I do need to get consensus of the board that this adequately represents the question all of us would like to, to.
To ask.
Going forward, to ask, and I can't do that by just sending an email and essentially polling you, which in itself.
Right, no, I was just for informational purposes, and then we would discuss it.
I can, I can provide that as part of the, yeah, I can provide that to the board in advance, so they can see it, research it, and then we can discuss it together.
Okay, great, Board Member Browning?
Yes, and it's, it's, from my point of view, it's less of a violation than a clarification of operation, and what, what I would, you know, what I would like to see, the optimum, is that the way we operate, get a carve-out, if in fact, you know, they, they can render a carve-out for whatever operation we have, and you can use our current, you know, because I guess that's been going on for years. It's the clarity that we have to have, at least from my point of view, it's the clarity we have to have, and I will, I'll advise you just, you know, same day that I get back any feedback from, from my various requests for clarity and guidance. So, I'm not so much looking for this particular board member, I'm not so much looking for a breakthrough ruling on violation, what I'm looking for is clarity so that we can operate and move ahead, like for example, on the one situation where we broke it into five to make it work, you know, from our point of view, as compared to like last Monday, where we didn't break it into five. That would be a little easier to see the inefficiency of having somebody come down and bust it into five. We were able to do it all five, and so if we could do this other one, all five at one time, boom, you get eighty percent improvement in, in efficiency of salaries, everything, and, and I also gain, and this is something that's critically important to me, is I gain the wisdom of Board Member Cummings, and we established that last Monday, that he stays in his lane, he has a lane, he's a really serious driver, if anything is ever brought to this board, I want to see what that man has to say about it, I want to see what the chair has to say about it, I want to see what Ms. Campbell has to say about it, and same thing with Ms. King, so, I want to see those things in my optimum situation, that's what I'm looking for. So it isn't just busting out, you know, a violation, it isn't about that, for me, although we do need to protect ourselves, that we are never nailed for having had a violation, nor our staff, because they're just doing their job.
That's right.
You know, and they're under orders, for the most part.
So it's important for us to have the forum right in the first place, because when we, when we address the state attorney's office, for example, regarding such a thing, the state attorney's office is limited to, they don't issue advisory opinions, they, if they see a violation, they tackle the violation, they don't regard, they don't, they don't discuss what we should do or shouldn't do, or anything like that, it's a, it's a binary proposition, whereas the Attorney General's Office is the forum by which they clarify. Now, getting in the right forum is step number one, we have an AG opinion, they don't give carve-outs, though I think you could probably say the same thing is true, that they, by explaining or giving an interpretive answer, that then, that then produces sort of their, their blessing on a certain way of, path of doing things or not. And it's going to be extremely fact-specific, which is why it's important that we submit the facts that we want, and we delete any extraneous facts that don't matter. So that's, I have to be narrow in my question, but sufficiently detailed with the facts of what it is in our particular situation that matter and that we're asking about. And that's why it's, it does take a little bit of time to draft.
So, so, in this draft letter, and I think this is what I heard the other day, is that this draft letter will have the question that speaks specifically to the current scenario that has been questioned, and that scenario or question would come from Board Member Browning, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
The idea that we start in the sunshine, and then we meet, and when we meet, we want to be able to meet legally for sure, that everybody feels comfortable, that the superintendent knows she can bring her staff in, procedural part, that this board knows we can go to the meeting, we don't have to bust it into five, for example, like Monday, we don't have to do it, we're confident, and we're confident from a, from a legal point of view, and boom, as soon as you get that done, you're off to the races, we don't have to do that five, five separate thing, because that five separate thing is something I'll go to the mat on, because I don't get to hear what Reverend Cummings has to say, and I demand to be able to hear what the Reverend, his leadership, so it's just like that simple, and, and right now, we can't, for our perception of the way the law is. So it'll be very exciting, I think, but I'm not looking so much, I call it a carve-out or not, it, it's, you know, I'm not looking for a legal challenge or to accuse a violation, what I'm saying is, I would like to see this be able to proceed, we start in the sunshine, it goes into the shade, wait, are we, are we in good shape? Do we get guidance that going into the shade is appropriate, like an executive session? There's an example, and then boom, we know what we're talking, no, I realize, I'm just using as a, as an example that's a carve-out, and at that point, going into the shade is fine, then boom, all five are in the same room, we hear a new proposition like this, you know, like the forty million dollar build-out, we hear it all at the same time, that's, that's what I'm looking for, because I think that it's valuable to everybody here, to be able to hear, at least, it may be, sound a little egotistical, but I would like everybody to hear what my three-hour program was like, and you were, you all were unable to hear that, and it's lost for all time. I lost, I lost what you had to say for all time, and so, that's a very valuable thing. And then, you've got, you've got the conduit, which is a separate and apart item, it's a described item, no message in it, legal, totally legal, put a message in it, and now it becomes at least the appearance, or perhaps it could even be a violation, according to, I think, page eight. So, that clarity will let the superintendent operate at full throttle, and that's.
Ask for me to get good clarity on the question, and then from there, we'll get clarity hopefully from the Attorney General.
Yes, and to wrap this up, thank you Attorney Powers for drafting something so that we will have it available, and then based on the Attorney General's opinion, that will likely influence our decision-making on briefings moving forward, so, anything other than that right now is purely conjecture, so let's get the question, let's get it answered, and, and then we'll proceed from there with good information.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Member Browning, did you have any other comments or concerns for the good of the cause today? Oh, I'm sorry, you weren't done yet, I'm so sorry.
It's okay, I'm good.
Are you done? Okay.
I organized that, so sorry.
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good, yes, sir.
Sure.
Okay, yes, I do have, I, let's see, I met with Dennis McFadden on the Stanton situation, the unitary status, the whole idea we had, we've, we've got a whole series of images going back twenty years, some of which you all are aware of, just because of like Ms. King, you know, going back many years, with the situation out there, and Reverend Cummings, I really appreciate you jumping in on the safety aspect of this, because the buses, and since we were talking about transportation today, they, you all have been there, they come right to that, across that, the school road, and the neighborhood road, no stop sign, no crosswalk, no warning sign, I mean, it's just a disaster, so, the sooner we get that figured out, the better. Now, linking that to Howard, the Howard Academy situation, I would like to introduce, and this is timely, it's a, it is the Department of State African-American Cultural Historic Grants, we're in a specific time zone, and I think it just connects well with our Howard Academy situation, this is about money, and, and recognition, so, I would like to see this get, get chased down, Sandy Shaughnessy up there, who runs the operation, is, will jump right on our needs, because we've already made really good headway, I think, in, in a couple of different ways, with African-American culture down there, we've got like the living museum, and up here, we've got the current museum, the actual modern one, so, if, if the board is, is happy, I'll, I'll give this to, what's the proper protocol, to the chair, and the chair gives it to you? Yes. And, and it will, it will, the money is significant, and I think, looking at it, reading it in a cursory manner, I, I think we might have an opportunity for some, some substantial funds, especially in the Howard Academy situation. I don't know if we can stretch it into the, to the knee down in Stanton, but very likely, because we've got a history there, going to nineteen oh four. I think we've covered some of these others, oh, I do, I did want to just announce the excitement of our Monday meeting and finding the C code that is in our, our chart, now, what do we call that?
Agenda.
Our agenda. The C code is incredibly important, that would have helped dramatically to be able to know the items to pull out so that we can have, we can have discussion, and it's, it's just, it's huge, and that would have, that would, I can now tell, almost, five, six. almost five, six days ahead of time with that C code. And I think so can the rest of the population out there. Everybody can see that and be on top of it. It's just incredibly important. Then a final thing that I have is, we had, you a little bit touched on, on this, on the, on our Monday meeting, it was an excellent meeting, by the way, for me. It was so, it was so casual, so relaxed, and a whole lot of material, you know, got covered. But the, there was a, there was a lot of media coverage, and there was concern over the school, the, the building, build-out funding, and, and our staff. And my questioning, specifically my questioning as to whether or not it was correct. And so, a number of people have gone back and looked, and I have gone back and looked as well, and the idea of the financial advisors, the way it was presented to this board, I wasn't here that day, I was listening to it over the, over the telephone, but that was the message that I got, was that it was a creative way of funding, and that we, we had to do a, it was called a creative method, and it had come from, and it was presented as, coming from financial advisors who were delivering a creative method to arrive at the $40 million. And then there was a second, through the chair, on a creative idea of, of bringing in interns. So, there was, the creative nature of that is the thing that, that I have to question, just so I get more information. It's just very, very helpful. And it's, it isn't, everybody's got the right intention. I'm not questioning the chair, for example, on the idea of interns and moving things over, so that the funding would be allowed, as compared to academic, it would be allowed. It's just a question of how in the world do you get there, and is it, is it something we have to toss over to the, to legal? Because I'm used to, I'm used to loans, and I'm used to business like that. So, I think that, that the, the long and short is, we have really advanced the ball up the field in terms of questioning and bringing out and, and increasing discussion on these issues, without it being accusatory in any regard. It's a question of whether or not, or how it would be perceived, especially if you're juggling funds that can't be here, but, but we figure out a way creatively, and somebody advises that, well, it's, it's incumbent on us to figure out how valid that is. So that's all I have. If that helps with some clarity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Campbell.
Sure. Thanks, Chair. I have just a couple of things. First of all, on January 7th, this was a while ago, but on January 7th, in that work session, I brought up the need for us to update our district voter precinct information to align with what the Supervisor of Elections Office has. And Florida Statute 1001.36 calls them Board Member Residence Areas. And so our current list on the website was from 2015, and that predates the superintendent and several of us on the board as well. And several of those precincts on our current list are outdated and no longer used by the Supervisor of Elections. So that's, Attorney Powers, just a few moments ago, was mentioning about potentially Supervisor of Elections, Wesley Wilcox joining us to talk about that specifically, because we are only able to make modifications in odd-numbered years. At this juncture, I'm not requesting that we change the district lines being redrawn of any sort, because that actually cannot be done until after he gets all of the congressional lines that have, that will be redrawn in 2022. But because we're only able to make changes in odd-numbered years, I would like for us to potentially, if it pleases the board, to at least have Mr. Wilcox come and explain to us the timeline. Potentially, he can also talk about the referendum timeline. But to tell us about his precincts and how we can align with what they actually are. And then, we will have to wait again until 2023 to actually make the, the lines line up with the new congressional information. So that's why I'm grateful for this from Ms. Elena Martinez, or Martinez-Lopez, because maybe on January 19th, 2023, we go ahead and make an agenda item, Board Member Residence Areas, so we can get ahead of this early in that odd-numbered year, to actually make things align with the supervisor's office. So if it pleases the board, I would like for us to move forward with trying to get that done, just so the precincts are accurate on our website, because right now, they're not.
Right. And I'm looking at
I'm very comfortable with it.
I'm looking at Thursday, January 6th, and in a work session, we'll be talking about redistricting schools and
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I, I was talking about the 2023.
Right, right. And, but what I'm thinking about is, as far as having, inviting Wesley Wilcox.
But actually, we have to do it in an odd-numbered year. So that's right now. So actually, November 4th would be the most operative time, I believe, because we cannot move on anything and make changes to anything with this, except in an odd-numbered year, which is in 2021. So the most recent one was in 2015. Unfortunately, I brought this up in January and just hadn't thought about it again until recently. My apologies.
I had a few things going on.
No, I know. My apologies. The, the most recent one in, in 2025 was actually redone in June of that year for placement for December 31st, 2015, is whenever it went into place. I'm just trying to get us to clean up some of our information that's inaccurate on our website currently.
Right. And that's very important. And hopefully, Wesley can join us on November 4th, so we can start getting this ball rolling. I think that's a great idea. It'll also be good to get clarification on our, our dates and making sure that's all lined up for the process for the funding referendum. So thank you, Board Member Campbell. That'll be great.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. So, I had spoken with Mr. Wilcox about this, just so I knew what I was asking for and all. And so I tentatively said, if it would be possible, November 4th is a work session, if you are available. And he blocked out about an hour and a half on that morning, 9:30 to 11:00 or so. I was like, I don't know where we can fit you on the agenda, but if you, and obviously with him being the Chair of the State Association, now his calendar fills up pretty quickly. So he is available that morning if, if we're able to, to put that on the agenda for November 4th.
Let's try to make that a priority.
Early on the agenda.
Right, maybe, early on the agenda.
Right.
Very pleased.
Specific name for advertising?
Pardon?
Specific name for advertising?
It, it will be Board Member Residence Areas, is what the actual Florida statute, that's what we'll be discussing. And that's the way the wording is actually in the resolution that was signed in 2015. It's not redistricting, not redistricting. Board Member Residence Areas, and, and to align them with the precincts that the supervisor. Because redistricting's going to have to happen after he gets the congressional information, which, so, again, 2023, I will be here in 2023. I know, I know that, you know, Lord willing, so.
Let's do everything we can to
Right, right.
Help you lay the foundation.
Thank you, thank you.
At my age, I can't make that
So, separate and apart, for, well, I, you know, Lord willing, I'm just saying.
Don't ride.
So, separate and apart from that discussion, I also would like the board to potentially entertain something I've also brought up in, in the past, and that's adjusting the school representation list. So, hear me out for just a moment, because I understand that that can actually be adjusted and modified at any time on our purview. And I totally understand, we all love the schools we represent and would never want to lose one. I get that. So hear me out on this for just a moment. Just in looking at it as a, as a candidate prior to joining this board, I saw some discrepancies, specifically in just the volume of schools, as well as the volume of students. And I wouldn't want any one board member to be overburdened by volume that that could, could create. So this is, obviously, no board members requested this, other than I had brought it up previously, and we haven't discussed it again. But now that I understand, we're not going to be able to, it's not redistricting. That's not at all. This board member assignment to specific schools is, I believe, something that we can do at any given time. So here's what I, I wanted to stress. So as I mentioned before, not only does the District 3 board member represent the most schools, and schools currently assigned are the largest schools in our, our county, including our three largest elementary schools, our second-largest middle school, and actually four total middle schools, and our largest high school in addition to one other. Meaning that volume of students and families is very, very significant. Additionally, District 4 does represent our alternative programs, apart from schools. But with Evergreen no longer being an elementary school, and alternative programs, as well as Hillcrest School, being limited volume of students, the differences in the numbers of students and families that potentially that school board member represents are vast, just between those two in particular. So I would like to see if the board entertains it, for us to potentially have staff, or however this needs to work, but to readjust some of those assignments, because I do think it will be for the good of the community and parents and families, just on a volume basis, so that each of us, certainly, we don't want to lose our schools, I get that, I understand that. But just on looking at it collectively, on a long-term strategy, to say, is there a way that we can adjust this, so it's, it's more equally available for each board member? So, and I am not in either one of those districts, so I, I want to just stress that I, I think that it would be helpful for all of us to have a, a little more equal representation, especially considering the volume of families and students, as well as the volume of schools. So, I wanted to throw that out there.
Makes sense, on this end.
It don't make sense to me, because it's one of my, it's my
I know, I know. That's why I, I use districts instead of names this time, because I'm like, this is the way they're represented.
Is, is my district. I don't have an issue with, this is the thing, when I look at it, that's on the website, that's on the number, but as board members, we represent every school in, in the county. And we have equal access to go to any and every school. So that's, that's on paper. That just gives those people that attend or have kids at those schools, a name that they can reach out to immediately. So, I'm, I'm not for it, but I'm, I'm fine with how it was set up right now.
Yeah, well, I agree. I mean, we do represent, like, we always are crossing lines in schools, and I think we just take on, you know, whatever comes our way. I'm fine leaving it as it is right now, you know, if you guys are.
Sometimes too, and, and this is something that we may or may not want to look at formalizing, because we have just always picked up the phone and answered the call, and haven't necessarily let another board member know, hey, you know, I got a phone call from a school in your district. Mostly, that works out, because by the time a, a parent reaches out to us, they want some immediate resolution. We all handle things a little bit differently, I'm sure, because we're all individuals. So, I'm, I'm willing definitely to, to think about it. I will say that volume is, is one measure, although I've had some schools that have been very large, and I hardly ever hear from them. They tend to handle their own stuff, and it's very rare that, that something comes to me. And then I have much smaller schools, and when something does happen, it's incredibly complicated, because it involves a special needs student, it involves IEPs, it involves OCR complaints. I mean, it can get pretty intense. So, while volume is one measure, there's also a lot of other measures. Every school has its own individual. You know, I think that it's kind of weird, I will say, because years ago, schools were traded out. And a lot of times, you know, there's various reasons for doing that, that don't, that may or may not have anything to do with each board member's desire personally. That said, it does seem strange to me that I drive right past a school to get to other schools that are in my district. But, if there's already a really good relationship with that board member, and the board member doesn't want to give it up, that's where the, the horse trading comes in. So, you know, I'm, I'm willing to, to think it over, and, and maybe offer up some suggestions at our next comment time. I, I appreciate you bringing it up. But I think what I'm also hearing is that the board members whose districts are involved haven't had any issues, that they really care to, you know, that hasn't given us the incentive to really want to change anything. We've certainly had a lot on our plates otherwise, but it's always good to look at. It's been a long time since districts, you know, and, and what schools each board member serves were, were looked at and potentially changed.
And, and again, I, I can fully respect that. I understand that you guys aren't having any issue with it at all. I just know, whenever I was driving out, the way they hop, specifically, between our two districts, the way, and, and even our two districts, the way it hops, I have the left side of Merrickham Road, but I don't have the right side. Or, you know, but if you cross over baseline, then I do have the right side, but not the left. I mean, it, the, the line, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And, and certain communities specifically, I'll use Silver Springs Chorus Community, I represent one of the schools, and Board Member Browning represents a couple of the others. I mean, so, specifically in communities, it, it isn't completely, however, we're all, yes, handling and pick up, picking up the phone anytime we get a phone call. I just wanted to reference it, because it's not something that's been brought up in a long time. And, you know, we, we, if we wanted to move in that direction, I just kind of wanted to throw some ideas out as to what that might look like. And I don't know what those ideas are, but I, I know it just hasn't been addressed in a long time. So.
Madam Chair, and I think it, and I understand where Ms. Campbell is at with it. And I think where, where she sees those issues, or where those issues are, they're not really issues, is at the lines, is at the actual line, because for you and me, it's Martha King. I have the two, I have the schools on the, the west side of Martha King, and then you have Madison Street, which is right there on the east side of Madison Street. So, it's just the lines. But, the, the thing is, I think it builds rapport with us and as a community, when we, when we don't, we don't pigeon those districts down to, or those schools down to saying, I'm just stuck to this one board member. Someone may be more comfortable, because you had kids at Madison, at NH Jones, that they may reach out to you. And, and I think it helps us when we're, we're not just so locked into my district schools. Because I've had things at North Marion, Ms., Ms. King, North Marion Vanguard, and vice versa. And I think that just, people sense, this, there's that possessiveness, that people's like, well, why are you at my school? You know, if I go to East Marion Elementary, why is he at my school? His district is way across county. All of them are our schools. And I don't want us to get to that point where we're, we're so possessive about a specific school. That's, that's my logic.
So then it also would beg the question as to why we even have them assigned that way. So I, I don't know if there's a way to, I, I haven't looked at other boards, I haven't even considered that. But is there a justification or a reason why each one of us is assigned to specific schools?
That is a great point, because it's very, very confusing to voters, because how many times have each of us that have run for school board been told, oh, you know, I, I support you, I'd really like to vote for you, but you're not in my district. Well, you don't have to be in my district, because it's a county-wide race. Board Member Browning, thank you for your patience.
Yeah. And I, I really agree, because, you know, the people like out around Lake Weir, if it says Lake Weir, Lake Weir High or something, you know, they say, oh, are we losing Ms. Campbell? And I said, no, you're, you're gaining Don Browning. And, and if they're smart, they'll have five board members that they're very, very close to. We have a strong legislative delegation. To your point, Reverend Cummings, it's, it's, we have a powerful legislative delegation in Marion County, because we touch the edge, the village, this and that. And, and I have used that time and time again. You can run for office up there, and then you get your own vote. You grab hold of the Marion County Legislative Delegation, and, and they all see a, see something, you know, from your perspective. And you've got 10 votes, and they have a sphere of influence. And suddenly, you take the center of the state, you know, and, and we're in a power position. So I think that's, that's what happens to schools and the communities. Every school should know they can cultivate a relationship and benefit from a relationship with all five, plus the superintendent. I, I just like to have meetings at places, at various schools. And I, I don't pay much attention to the assignment.
Let's make a note too, to ask Wesley Wilcox as far as if there's any thing from his side of things that would preclude us from just, you know, getting rid of districts completely. It certainly would be less confusing to voters, that these are the five people, or the four people, or the two people that are running for school board. You know, I don't know. But, but originally, I think it was districts were brought about so that people would feel like they had a go-to person. It wouldn't just be like, well, some nebulous person from somewhere is going to help me. You know, they can look on the website and say, oh, you know, Nancy Thrower's in this district. So, that's who they might call first.
Lives there.
Lives there, yes. And that's another great point, you know, when you live in the district. So, so food for thought, man.
So I have two minor things. So, the, one thing is, is procedural, and you may be speaking about, I know that Attorney Powers' review is coming up, and I know
I will be speaking on that.
Perfect. So I can hold my comment until you speak about it, if that would be good. Because it was going to be in relation to a self-evaluation tool, if that's something that we could do. But the last thing I wanted to share, actually, is something that we normally would, I would normally talk about in a board normally talk about in a board meeting perhaps, but this weekend is the Bellevue versus Vanguard football game. So, the reason I want to bring that up, yeah, neither one of those are in District One, so that's ironic that I'm bringing that up. But what I wanted to, the reason I wanted to bring it up is because Vanguard's going to be honoring their first team 50 years ago that evening and the interesting thing to me about that is the first quarterback for Vanguard High School is going to be throwing out the coin toss. And many of the folks in the community may not actually be aware of him or who he is, but I know him really well because shortly after leaving Florida, he moved to Cleveland, Tennessee, which is my hometown. I obviously moved here and made Marion County my home, my new home 20 years ago, but he moved there about 30 years ago and so many people in Marion County may not know him, but I grew up with his daughters and all. And so, I just wanted to publicly welcome and say thank you and welcome back home to John Vining. He's going to be Vanguard's first quarterback 50 years ago and he'll be doing the coin toss on Friday, so.
Excellent.
Just thought that was really cool. I mean, of all places. I mean, and as I've told you all before, my little county only had about 90,000 people whenever I left there and so, I mean, it's a little tiny place and, yeah, so his daughters and I all grew up together, so thought that was pretty cool.
Good deal, good deal, thank you. All right, and is that it? You're good?
Yes, that's it for me until we talk about the review.
Okay. Vice Chair King? Yes. We, I haven't seen lately, and it may be on our agenda at some point and I haven't been able to see it or something, we used to get like a dashboard or we'd get like some updates on how we're doing like academically, attendance, discipline and stuff like that and I haven't seen any of those yet this year and I was just curious, are we still having those or no, or is it on our agenda at some point? Because I'm kind of curious.
Oh, you mean the app and the balance scorecard?
Yeah, you know how we used to get an update like on our lower performing schools and stuff like that and-
Right, right, right.
Have they gone by the wayside? Are we still doing those or I'm just kind of curious? So, we're, you know, because again, we don't like to be blindsided. I kind of like to know where we're at, where we're going and-
Here, here, for sure.
If I may, Madam Chair, November 4th is our quarterly data review.
Okay.
Our work session.
There it is, because I was just-
There it is. Thank you.
I just didn't see that. And then also, one thing, another thing, because Mr. Browning, you keep addressing Stanton Weersdell and you talk about me being there and absolutely, most certainly, I think it was in around 2017 when I was chair and there were some concerns and you were down there, the deputy superintendent was there, Paul Gibbs, our former attorney, school board attorney, he was aware of it, the superintendent and even the county was there. And I, you know, back then it was decided that it wasn't a Marion County issue, there wasn't anything that we could do and that it was a county, it was from the county, that they're the ones that could help problem solve that. So, I'm not, I'm kind of curious because you keep looking at me and saying this hasn't been done and you're looking at me saying I've been working on it, but we looked at it, I was received that information, you know, from the qualified people, so I'm not sure really where, what you're wanting or where you wanted to go with this.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Because I feel like you're challenging me a little bit and I want to make sure that you know that I did do my job.
And I'm assuming you did. That's tremendous. It's Title VI, transportation of the six items. Transportation is one and the key to the school district is that it's incumbent, it's just mandatory that the walk-in zone is done correctly. It's, the only way you can retain unitary status, back in the day, you had equal but separate, separate but equal. And then the courts said, no, under Title VI, they said, no, they were separate, but they were not equal. So, then it had to come together and it was called unitary. It united. And so, once it united, they had six items. Those six items are critical and they must not be violated. You must have the school segregated, you must have equal opportunity with the teachers, with the courts.
Integrated, integrated. Who has to be integrated, not segregated?
Oh, did I say segregated? It must not be segregated, it must be integrated.
Integrated, yes.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. And so, you must do that and transportation was the other because they'd drive right on by and you'd be stuck, you know. It was, it was critical and so the walk-in zone is the key. That walk-in zone must be integrated and equal and unitary, it must be. It cannot, it's described as if, if, the metaphor was a forklift picks up a load of items that are going to one school in one area and another school in another area, you cannot tell the difference of the load of goods that go into the truck. You can't tell the difference of what it is. And down at Stanton, you can tell the difference. I mean, you can tell the difference, it looks like, it looks like segregation days of 20, of 1956 when it was, when it was brought in. So, that's, no, it is nothing in reference to you. You were simply a single board member. We really, Dr. Hamm, who was there, Dr. Hamm had it handled, literally had it handled and we had a, we had an open file and the file can still be opened and probably will get opened at the Department of, Federal Department of Education out of Atlanta. And that was hit incredibly hard by this district, by the attorneys, by the superintendent. I mean, that's just the facts. I mean, you can go look at whatever the history is that you have, but it was blasted.
It wasn't school, like, there wasn't anything we as a school board could do. It's county and that's why-
Totally could, totally could.
I'm like, I don't know if that-
Vice Chair King, this is your comment time, so please-
Totally can.
Continue your comments.
Okay, so I'll just leave it at that, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I do have a couple of things. First of all, as Board Member Campbell was stating, Attorney Powers, your evaluation is due, I think November 2nd is the day that you came on and that, gosh, time flies. And this is just a handout of the rubrics and also the performance evaluation. I would like to request that this be completed and shared individually, your evaluation with Attorney Powers by Friday, November 5th because Attorney Powers deserves to know how he's doing and we need to make sure that we're timely in this. And for Campbell, it sounded to me like you had a potential suggestion for a self-evaluation? Was that something you wanted to bring up?
Yes, so I, this is just a recommendation on several different fronts moving forward and I've made this recommendation actually to incorporate specifically in the, only we have control over two employees as we understand that, or actually we have employed, I don't want to say control, we have employed two employees that this school board actually has employed, one being Attorney Powers and one being the superintendent. Because time is of the essence and we're probably not going to be able to implement it on this go-around, I would like for this board to consider implementing additional tools beyond this for this, for moving forward in performance evaluations and that be a self-evaluation of the employee we're evaluating as well as a peer evaluation of at least five peers if possible. And I give this recommendation and actually I think it would be good practice in multiple departments within the district, but I give it specifically because we have one singular viewpoint of our relationship with a particular employee that we have employed. However, we don't know how they necessarily feel about how they're doing or their goals for the future or what they would like to improve upon or what they automatically are going to say, these are things, and I'm just using this as an example because this is something that I do in businesses that I've worked in and have, and currently working in. But doing, having a self-evaluation tool is powerful because it helps come in understanding where they're coming from, from a frame of reference as well as from the individual who's evaluating them. But when you also incorporate a peer evaluation tool, that then also shows, we again only have a singular viewpoint, but don't actually understand the working relationships with other departments that they also work with on a regular basis. And so, it's not something that we're going to be able to incorporate this time, but I wanted to bring it up. I think it would be good for us. I did ask if there was a self-evaluation tool currently available and the only one that there is is a teacher self-assessment, but it still isn't quite the same because it's basically based on scores and things like that and that's still not what I'm looking for. And so, ultimately across the board, I would love to have these new tools implemented at some point. Obviously, that's operation, so I'm just making that recommendation. But I do think having self-evaluation and peer evaluation could just help make employee evaluations much more comprehensive than what we currently have.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell, and you do raise a good point regarding self-evaluation and something that we can implement right away that I would like to encourage each of us to do so that we'll be ready the next time Florida School Boards Association joins us, which I believe will be, the date's not set yet, but it will be in January. They provide a self-evaluation and I think that that would really be good for each of us to do and have that ready to go as part of our January meeting. So, that will be a step. And Dr. Gullett, if you would please take under advisement Board Member Campbell's suggestions and we'll move forward from there.
Sure.
Yes, sir?
Yes, I, I like the idea of that, the self, I kind of wonder about the self part because it would be an automatic 100% for anyone.
Not always.
Maybe not, you know, but, but then, I don't know what the legal term is, was you don't have to self-incriminate, you know, you don't have to, yeah, plea第五 and you're good to go. So, and, but that's a good one, but what would, who would be the, you mentioned, so I can understand, who would be the-
Peer evaluation?
Here, for say, for both of these parties that you mentioned.
The peer evaluations would come from the folks that they work with on a regular basis, potentially someone from Board Services, someone from a specific department that they work with on a regular basis, potentially even the superintendent, different folks like that to actually give us a comprehensive view. And so, obviously if you're talking about at a school-based level, it's going to be a different kind of peer and, but whenever we, we only have a singular viewpoint, we know what our relationship is with each of these employees, but we don't know what working relationships look like outside of our personal relationships. And so, those are, it's, again, they're doing a wonderful job, I'm not trying to critique it all, I'm just trying to say to make this a more comprehensive review process so that we have a full picture of working relationships apart from what ours are.
I think it sounds good.
Would that be anonymous or would it be?
Well, I mean, it wouldn't be known to the particular employee, I wouldn't say. Potentially it could be, it all depends on how many peers you have evaluate them.
Hypothetically.
Sure, I mean, if it's, well, I mean, if it's five to seven people that they work with, they probably wouldn't know whose comments you're bringing forth, they would just know potentially that these five to seven people were a part of that individual peer, right.
Put in a blank, a blank peer review.
Right.
Okay.
I think it sounds good in theory and here's why, because being, you know, a teacher or whatever and when it's time for the, you know, survey process, you realize who your boss is, right? So, it's like, hmm, and people weren't always comfortable. I just wonder if like, if we could maybe just send out a survey, a collective poll from everybody, just like a little survey, then that way it's not just targeted to a couple of departments or anything. Like, what if we just did an overall survey once a year or something, just to get a pulse of what they're thinking? And then it's not, it's, because when I think of five people and they know they're, I'm not sure we would really get accurate-
Sure.
-feedback that we're looking for.
Adonymously.
And that's fine if, because we only have two employees. Again, this is, if they implement this in human resources, that's a whole different look, but because we only have two employees, if there was something that we could do, obviously not starting right now, but something that we could do to-
Thinking forward.
Right, thinking forward, long-term. It just makes it more comprehensive because again, we only have our relationships and our viewpoints to go from and we don't work with them every day, frankly, so.
Well, especially, right, obviously whoever is chair or vice chair is going to have a deeper relationship and get to know them better and Board Services, you know, as well. So, we would definitely, anyone in that position would have a different lens than a typical board member who doesn't have to have as much contact normally. So, yeah, yeah, great, great food for thought and I think the implementation piece is always, you know, great idea and then the details of it to make sure that staff feels empowered if they're being asked something to say whatever they want to say in a way that doesn't make them feel at risk either.
The only challenge with the survey and while I appreciate that for sure because it would give certainly anybody who wanted to do it, from time to time, you just have to understand that the people who might complete that survey are the ones that are going to want to be negative for whatever reason. And so, hopefully not, but whenever you open it up to a really broad audience, then sometimes the ones that rise to the top are actually the ones that actually have the worst things to say.
Sometimes the ones that rise to the top are not the cream.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
You can only dance to so many, you know, march to so many drummers. So, I would be, I'd be very, very skeptical, but I'm open to hearing. And, you know, it's, it's an idea, I've never seen it before, but I, it's interesting.
Thank you.
For a lower resolution version of that, I can tell you I'd be happy to email each of you separately, just some of the thoughts that I have for professional development and growth and things like that, some things that over the last year I've made my own notes of, areas that I'm trying to work on consistently, improve, learn more about, things like that and that you may find useful or you can disregard.
Thank you. Yes, and I always look forward to performance evaluations because it is a chance to have conversation, you know, not around just how someone employee did in the last year, but what their needs are in terms of professional growth and that type of thing, so look forward to that. Okay, a couple of other reminders, please remember that your ethics training is due by December 31st. Florida School Boards Association's already sent us a link and I've put it in my calendar. I think I'm going to do it tomorrow and get it out of the way. I believe it's four hours, so it's a bit of a time commitment there. I don't think if there was anything else that was, okay. All right, and then these are just a couple of comments. When it comes to our public comment, I really would like to research and just make sure I'm super clear on how they're doing it in Tallahassee. I've been to a few meetings up there, but it's been a while and I really like, because of the size of Marion County, I would really like to begin to implement the community member call-in and have it be, I think in, at the state board meetings, they do one minute that a citizen can speak and it's very automatic, you know, at one minute, when it's second 59 and it turns to 60, the call is just disconnected. So, and then you move on to the next person to try to give citizens as much opportunity as possible conveniently. Because what I'm hearing from employees is that it doesn't matter what time of day the school board meetings are, they just have too much on their plates. They would love to be able to provide input, but by the time they get home from their job and deal with their kids and everything else to get dressed and drive anywhere, even if it's much closer than this particular building, they're just not going to do it. And what they do do is they watch them on YouTube and they either watch it live or they watch it at a convenient time because it's there in perpetuity. There was not a, there was a time and it was in the very recent past that our work sessions were not televised and I think it was, was it just when we came on that we started televising or right before? I mean, it's been very recent.
Since we've been on the board.
Okay, yeah, so in terms of transparency, I think that we've really worked hard to open that up, but I would like to use technology and also feedback that I'm getting from my citizens that they would be much more interactive if they could call in. And they are able to handle it in Tallahassee and if someone begins to go off the rails, you know, there's parameters there, just like at our meetings, the person just gets, you know, cut off. But hopefully we wouldn't have to do that very much. I think if we set the expectation and say we're doing this to invite more community input, that we will get more respectful community input like we've had here so far. So, I don't want a lot of conversation on it today, I just would like for you guys to think about it. I would also like, Kevin, if you wouldn't mind, to look into how the format is specifically at the state board meetings and then we'll have some meat to discuss. So, that's something that's been on my mind because we don't know if we're going to be in this building, if we're going to be moving to another building, it's years down the road before we would ever be- It's years down the road before we would ever build a bigger building. We've looked at City Hall, we've looked at the County Commission, you know, other auditoriums to have our meetings, and each one was discounted for lots of good reasons. I also am conscious of taxpayer money, and if we're asking Kevin and his team to move about the county and set up and do all of that to have a meeting that is very poorly attended, which has happened in the past, we had a meeting up at North Marion, and then I think we had one south of town, and, you know, nobody showed up. So let's, I would like to listen to what the public is saying, and public likes using technology these days for input. So just something to put in the hopper. We've been really flexible when it comes to public comment and not stopping public comment when it deviates from what we say, and our attorney says that it needs to be related to the agenda item or a topic that we may discuss in the future. And like our work session today, you know, it was very clearly stated that we had COVID-19 updates in transportation. So any public comment needed to be tailored to those comments. So I would like to just make sure that the rest of the board knows that going forward, there's no point having our attorney say it and then not stick to it. So we're either not going to do it, or we're going to do it. But as long as it's in our introduction, then we will be doing that. And it's not to squelch anyone, but it's just to put our actions where our mouths are, and I think that that's important. The other thing is too, is that it was actually my request, Attorney Powers, and I think my request came from, was to try to protect all school board members. It can be volatile time right now, and sometimes a correction coming from an attorney is more neutral than it is coming from the board chair, who then can sometimes be given the impression, oh, well, she's sitting up there, you know, running the show. Well, as Chair, sure, you are running the show. But I am all about increasing participation rather than making feel people put off. But I do understand that in the end, it's the board chair that is running the meeting. And I felt bad for Vice Chair King, especially last week when she was called out by name regarding a topic that she didn't even give, it wasn't your idea, and it wasn't something that you gave a lot of actionable positivity to. And so again, it was that misinformation that a citizen had and then stood up here and called out a board member. I'm not okay with that. I'm very okay with respectful public comment. I'm very okay, I don't even know who calls me on my caller ID. If there may be a name, there may not be a name. I don't scream my calls. I take any call that comes to me. So, you know, I think that we are all in our own ways, you know, very accessible. But we have a great track record of having meetings where we've had citizens come in with a very strong opinion on what they would like to see us do. And so far, it has resulted in respectful dialogue. And as long as I'm Chair, that's going to continue because what we've seen in the mainstream, and again, I think this speaks to, there's this point in society where people feel like they can just say anything to anybody anyway. No, we represent kids here, and we need to be the role models for kids. And if citizens want to come in here, they, in my mind, are automatically also role models for kids. So I'm going to just make sure that everyone is on the same page with this, that every board member with as hard as you all work deserves to feel like they're not going to be personally attacked during any meeting that I chair.
Madam Chair? Yes, I'd like to see a work session on that, absolutely, because it is critically important. There's no question. I would, I think, I think times have evolved where typically, and I hate using brand names, but typically it's community standards and, you know, I mean, it's pretty easy. We have a beautiful example in the County Commission, pretty simple, pretty straightforward, pretty respectful to the people, and not a lot to fear. And if somebody does get out of line, it's like if you have a car wreck, you know, you just don't assume you're going to have a car wreck. Typically, these things are all very, very popular. I would love to see a work session just for our, our public relations side of the world. I think we do need to talk about it. I have some very definite ideas about the length of that thing Jeremy has to read out each time, and it starts with almost something you would never do to a relation, to a community member, to, you assume everybody is absolutely upstanding, especially if they take the time to come all the way across a county, say from Dunellen or something like that. It's, they're not considered hostile, for sure. Do we consider this a hostile witness? No, not at all, very positive. So I would love to see a work session, if we could, if we could pull that together, if the board likes the idea of it, because we're in a public relations world. And Kevin Christian can tell you, that's what you have to do. I mean, you have to market what we do here, and you have to do it in a very, very polite way. So I would love to see a work session on exactly what you're saying.
And if the rest of the board feels that a work session is necessary to go into any more depth other than what I just shared, then I'm happy to entertain that. My ask is that we continue with the same, you know, open, friendly, welcoming demeanor, and that we have a Plan B for when that's not being reciprocated. And that's very important. And I think the way to do that is to stick to our policies and stick to our script, you know, if we're going to say it, then we need to implement it. Same thing with the three minutes. There's no point having a timer and giving someone three minutes, and then, because we're nice polite people, they get allowed to go over, but then the next person that comes up, especially if they are saying something that's a little bit more on the inflammatory side, there's a tendency to make sure that they're cut off at the three minutes. And then that doesn't look fair. So in all fairness, I just think we need to not need, my intention is to politely tighten up on this a little bit and just set the standard. And I believe we've done a good job of that. But when a situation occurs that makes me rethink of how we're doing things and how to make sure that everyone feels that they're being respected, so there's no fear whatsoever, even though school board members have been attacked, you know, that's happened. I don't expect that it's going to happen here. I don't go in with that type of mindset. I go in with a very open and enthusiastic mindset. So that's my comment. That's where I'm going to leave it, unless anyone is ready to do anything differently at this point.
What Reverend Cummings said today in that answer, that was just beautiful to me. That was timely, boom, he had an answer, boom. Somebody takes the time, and there's dialogues, and we're humans, and we can make the decision. I love that ability to be able, and if you don't want to answer it, certainly you don't have to, and if it wants to go, say to the Chair, great, you know, that type of thing. I'd love to see that maybe move in that direction a little bit in terms of reduced hostility or assumption that it's going to be negative.
Can I speak to that for a second? There is a script there for a reason. A few years back, there was not a script, and there have been times where people in the audience, people on the board, superintendent, it can get hostile. You haven't witnessed it, thankfully, and that's why there are the guidelines, because if you don't have certain guidelines, then I have personally seen it, you know, I've seen other board members probably put people in the audience to even attack other board members. So that script is there for a specific reason. I'm comfortable leaving that script there. I mean, it's just guidelines is what we do, and it keeps our meeting focused also and not going, you know, because the last thing I think we should is, I definitely don't want to have a hostile, hostile meetings. We've worked very, very hard. This has been a board that has, that puts students first, and our focus is on our children and doing what's right and what's best for them. And I, as a board member, will continue to make sure that I do exactly that. And that means being good examples for them, seeing a good school board that can, you know, that doesn't act, how to interact, have conversations and stuff, and not go down that, and I'll just, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Vice Chair King.
I guess my, and I should have probably not should have engaged the gentleman, but I knew what he was talking about, and I did have the answer right there. I just wanted him to have the information. That should not be the norm. We should, we should let them give their comments and then kind of respond towards the end in our comments. There are times where situations that the superintendent or her staff will have to deal with those situations. But I've been here where we've had some rough meetings and stuff like that, and the past few years since I've been on the board, we've come a very, very long way. I think at one point, the community has sensed that this board really does care about the staff, the students, the parents, and the legitimate concerns of our community. And I don't want us to ever disintegrate or mess with the integrity of what we built these past few years as a board member. I won't be here forever, and whomever comes, I will want them to not have to come into situations where there was, where the board wasn't civil, or where there was an adversarial aspect between the board and the community. Right now, we welcome any public comment. We want to come and give public comment, and we need to be respectful as they are respectful back and forth. I didn't like the idea of them calling out board members before I was on the board, and I like them calling out board members since I've been on the board. So we need to maintain that decorum. But I think, I like the script where we are. I think it keeps us orderly and focused and pointed in a right, in a positive direction.
Board Member Campbell?
And I just wanted to speak to the idea of having a work session about it. I, I don't know that that is necessary right now, and here's the reason. Other school boards across this nation are having lots of issues. We're not. And so I don't want us to draw attention to something that makes the community feel as if we need to heighten some kind of changes or anything like, because things are working so well right now. I haven't been on the board necessarily when incredibly hostile situations have happened, but I have been in the audience when that has occurred, and it has been very helpful to have those stipulations and people standing up and storming up and when it's not public comment and those kinds of things. We have to have those guidelines in place for a reason. And so while I understand the need for dialogue may be there from the public's perspective, we also have to ensure that they're not trying to use it as a bully pulpit as well, and that's not the intention of a public business meeting. And finally, we have the availability. I know we all pick up our cell phones anytime a person has a direct question of any one of us, same thing with email. If it's a direct question to any one of us, we all will respond. So if they feel as if they want to have a direct response, perhaps they could try that way to communicate back and forth if they're asking for something specifically from each one of us. But frankly, from a work session standpoint, I don't really want to engage in conversation that may appear while, yes, we're just trying to make, have the community more engaged. It may look as if we have an issue with the community, and that's why even adding it to a work session agenda would cause me hesitation.
Can I say something behind that?
Sure.
We may not, as a board, have some of the issues that we see nationwide, but individually we do in this community. And I think there's some validity what Mr. Brown is asking for. Some things just don't get put out in the public or advertised, but we do.
Well, and for good reason, though, I think that's not out in the public. I mean, if we want to change that, I mean, perhaps.
Specifically, what are you speaking to?
I mean, we have some of those same issues that have happened nationwide. They just may not have been as publicly known, or have, this board may not have made them publicly known. Individually, we've had them. I have them, and that's what I'm saying. So I think it's good that we kind of talk about some, I could, staff could tell you that there's several calls that come all the time after meetings behind this. And so that's why we, I don't publicize a lot of things because I'm private in a lot of ways. How you be in the public, kind of be private, but I am private about certain things and some things I don't want to draw attention to, but it is there. Just because we don't, it's not in the paper and on the news, doesn't mean that it's not happening. And that was one of the, yes.
That's what you're saying, sure. And we're never going to have 100% approval on anything, and we all have our own thoughts about a lot of things. And in my mind, if, the forum for something like that would be a town hall meeting, you know, if any of us ever wanted to do anything like that singly or as an individual, and that's almost called campaigning, you know, when people can really do that, give and take. So I appreciate this.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may make a clarification, the, what I'm looking for, really, when I'm thinking work session, is if you critically look at the document he reads, it's almost impossible to follow. For example, if you go out and, let's say you've come here to talk, and this is what I get, and you say, I can't come here to talk, I can't write it all out, I can't then follow it three minutes, five minutes verbatim, I can't do that. I don't have a copy machine, I don't have a way of doing that. So we're asking some things that make it look a little foolish, say, well, that's not really what we mean, well, then why do we say it? That kind of thing. That's what I mean by a work session. You know, just to get into some of the mechanics, some of the language is quite honestly a bit inflammatory. Just read it, read it like you were, you were talking to yourself like that. And so there is no way that you could, a person cannot follow verbatim or have it get yanked. I mean, what, they're not following it, you know, that type of thing. So, and there's no copy machine to have a copy, then you'd be reading it, and they really should be able to be speaking, you know, that type of thing. So I'm talking about mechanics, and I think it would be good, or I'll bring it up another time or something. I think this is great that we're talking this much. I think it's, this level of discussion is enormous, you know, for public relations. We've got the public relations expert right there. That's it. That's, that's marketing 101 for your, for your clients.
The effects of master board training.
Yes.
Say it, say it again?
The effects of master board training. This is the effects of.
Oh, exact, oh, yeah, what are you surprised about? That's beautiful. That was the best question. I've written that question down. What are you most surprised about? The, I wish we'd had much, many more people here, because what are you most surprised about? And the poor instructor was unable to get through slide number eight, because everybody was surprised about something, you know? And then she really didn't want to turn and look at, at Board Member Browning. Wow, wow, I mean, and then, and then her sidekick that came would melt down. Tina would come roaring in and melt down right in the middle of the thing, but it was so open and clear and positive, and on a first name and a casual and no masks, and we could hear, and we could tell what was going on. I just thought it was incredibly powerful.
Glad you enjoyed it, and hopefully the next one will build on the first one, for sure. In the meantime, Nicole, could we get a copy of the opening statements that we're currently doing to Board Member Browning? Could you email those to him? And then you can take a look at them.
I have them, I have them.
Oh, okay, and then maybe you could mark them up a little bit, and at a future time for when we're having our public comments or our board comments, you can share some suggested changes. I think that would be.
I actually have it with me today, but we've pushed too far. This is beautiful, what we've done today in terms of dialogue and discussion. I think it's immensely constructive.
And this is the way our work sessions.
In line with Reverend Cummings.
This is the way our work sessions tend to go.
That's my roadmap.
This is definitely the way that our work sessions tend to go, and that's what makes them so enjoyable. The last thing that I have is as far as the whole idea of what we're going to do with this building and what the timeline is going to be and where the funding is going to come from. I will never stop being creative for kids and look for creating opportunities for kids. It's, one of my most passionate beliefs is that. It's, one of my most passionate beliefs is that a large majority of kids are not cut out for a typical four-year college education, and that needs to be just fine. And we also have a lot of kids that are in very huge need of mentoring and internships. So whenever I mention career, you know, vocational, technical education training in the spirit of interning with staff, which we already do, do, I would like to see that grow. And so I think that there is a big difference between looking at an idea through a lens of creating opportunities for children versus bundling money into bond funds and playing tricky buddy with funding. And when words come up like fraudulent, that raised my hackles, and I'm going to share that with you because I felt like it was really unfair. And it sends a message to the community that perhaps we're doing something, you know, under the radar financially, that, oh, well, we could just kind of move this here and kind of move that there to make this work. That may have been your interpretation, so now I'm going to give you mine to make sure that you're clear on how I think. And how I think is if there's going to be an opportunity for kids to be surrounded by adults that are going to nurture them and mentor them and give them that window of, into opportunities for a real, good, strong, solid life where they're taxpayers and where they're independent thinkers and where they're able to support themselves and their families, I'm going to be all for a conversation about that. So that was the genesis of my comments that you brought up about creativity. So I just hope now that you know me a little better and that you'll keep that in mind. And I don't want a response necessarily. I just really would like to make it clear.
I would like to make a comment. I would like to make a response because it's directed at me. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the issue, the issue, we're at the five-year anniversary of, was it Bean, Whitaker, Whitaker, Bean?
Bean, Whitaker.
Yes. And those things that, it was creative financing. It got tossed, it got tossed, and then those got bundled. Enron was another.
We're all familiar with that. That's not what I was talking about.
Well, I realize that. That's what I'm talking about.
Right. And you did say that.
Thank you. Let me say, let me...
You did say that, and I had an opportunity to then share, and this is my comment time.
May I?
Please finish.
Thank you. Thank you. So the idea that if you go back, and I believe it is the first blush, two minutes, and it caught my eye, two minutes and 22 seconds of, of, I'm sorry, two hours, 22 minutes of the work session following the five closed meetings. Okay. Within 25 minutes, the issue was done. It was, they had a consensus. Okay. When financing was brought up, and a number of people have brought this to my attention, when it was brought up, it was brought up that we had some financial advisors that had come to the district and made these suggestions of how to move funds when you could not put them, you'll have to, you'll have to watch the tape. And so it was, it was, it was brought up that we had creative ways, and Ms. Boston and all this was not able to even go into it in any depth, but these were not her ideas. They were brought to the district by financial advisors. Just look at it and watch. So that's my concern. Now, I wasn't here, I was on the phone, but I heard it, and that troubled me because you can't move money that shouldn't be moved, it out of appearance sake. We aren't talking so much about illegality unless you get into bundling tax-free bonds, wow, now you've got issues. You've got mortgages, you've got all these things. So that needs to be questioned. That's all I'm saying. And the idea of the whole discussion on finance that day in that work session was to be able to move where we couldn't move because of the Department of Education, where we could not borrow the money, to where we could borrow the money, then we would move the money over. That's all I'm saying. And that needs to be addressed, just needs to be addressed in a public fashion. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. And that is a different concern and not related to what my suggestion was and why. I think I also need some clarification as to the financial advisor piece, and I feel like I remember differently where the idea came from, but that can easily be clarified. And I thank you for your, for your expertise and for your caution. We've all seen good, great, successful companies go down by the, using the kind of tactics that you described, and I just feel like that was not our CFO's intention whatsoever. And I felt like it was important to say that and also to confirm my approach to the situation. So it's, I do respect your knowledge and what you have to say, and I think that you're probably realizing very quickly that this is a very passionate board, and we're going to hash stuff out and shake hands afterwards.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And it does need, it merits discussion.
It does.
And it merits caution whenever you're dealing with large sums of money, and when you make the promises to borrow, you must follow some very strict rules. And these were anonymous advisors, and it was in the plural. So anonymous advisors...
We have a long time before we're going to be, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. This is the very, very first discussion on that, and nor you, nor I were in the room when that conversation happened. So we were at a disadvantage to all of the dialogue that happens. You know how valuable it is to be present, and I am, you know, not, was not a part of that in-person discussion. So we have a long time before we ever even get to any of the conversation.
But I did look at it, I did look at it again this morning. It was, I've got it right here if you wanted to hear it.
Can I make a suggestion that we move from this? And the reason I ask that, we move from this conversation, because we're given the appearance that our CFO is not doing a good job. She has done a tremendous job. She's done an excellent job.
I can't quite hear you.
We're given the appearance that there is something nefarious with our CFO. Am I right, Superintendent? And we have to back, we have to back our people, and this is not the time to do that. And I think we need to move away from this type of conversation because we're doing damage to someone's reputation.
That's exactly the opposite, exactly the opposite.
Dr. Gullett, he posed a question to you.
To Board Member Cummings' point, yes, I think there is great concern, not just with our CFO, but our whole finance team, that they may feel that they are doing something that is not only inappropriate, perhaps illegal. So there's great concern that's come to me from the department.
Correct. So can we please, I'm asking this board, let's table this.
Yep, I agree. Because it's reputations and character. And I'll tell you, our CFO and her team have done nothing but an outstanding, excellent job up to this point, and I do not have any reason to doubt any of their decisions. So I agree that we should just move forward, because to me, that's harassing our employees at this point.
I agree with that 100%. That's my point.
Then we will move on. Then we will move on. I'm done with my comments. And it's good that we're all on the same page with that, because in the end, it's our employees that, you know, make our district tick, and we're very grateful to them and very cognizant of their integrity. That was all I had for today, and as always, our work sessions go deep, they're passionate, but I, we always seem to move forward to the next one, you know, ready to keep making good things happen for this district. So I thank everyone for their time today, and if there isn't anything else for the good of the group, we will look at a journey at 12:59 PM, which is pretty early for us. All right, everybody, have a great day.